Get started here with the question part of our work session. I'm going to ask a couple of things of the members because we are going on three hours here. And this is not to move, this is more to move things along in an efficient way, not to cut time because we don't have a time limit tonight. But I'd like the board members to consider as they ask, as you all ask your questions, to try to frame the questions to help you better understand the current plans that are being offered. And I think that will help us come to a consensus sooner rather than later. If the questions are all framed in the context of trying to understand the plans that are up there. And then, and then if we can, let's, if we can possibly keep the questions to questions, that would be fantastic as well. And then I think what we'll do is at the end of the meeting, prior to sort of adjourning, we can do sort of a quick board matters time for folks to say some things if they want to wrap up. But in the question section, if we can keep it to questions, that would be very helpful. And then, um, yeah, and so when I mean consensus, I mean, just to get an understanding of where the board members are. Very similar, we're not voting tonight, but very similar to what we do when we are at a work session for the budget and we sort of give the superintendent, Dr. Waltz, an idea of how many folks are in favor of X or Y or Z, and they can sort of have some more guidance as they move to the final approval of next week. And then, um, I would ask the board members to go ahead and just ask your question. They're all assume the questions are being directed to Dr. Waltz, but what we've decided, what we've done is also make this more efficient is the person whose arena that question lands in will just go ahead and answer. And so we won't have to say, Dr. Waltz won't have to call on them. So I think that'll make it a little bit more efficient as well and easier for us to get through more questions. So we're going to start in alphabetical order.
Dr. Latif, point of clarification, are we doing one question per round robin?
Yeah, so that's a good, good idea. So, so I think what we can do is let's, let's ask like two or three questions, right? So, so each member can ask two or three questions. If you can bunch your questions, if possible, and it doesn't have to be in the same sort of arena. So if you have HR questions, maybe ask your HR questions all at once, right? If you have instructional questions, maybe ask those at once. But, but let's see how this goes. This is the first time we're doing this kind of work session, so it's challenging. So I just ask everyone to keep the questions to questions and, and we'll go ahead and start. And remember, we're going to do this more often. And like I said, if, if someone's asking a question that you might have an add-on to, raise your hand and I'll try to, you know, follow that along and then go from there. I see Ms. Dargapour has her hand up. Lisa? Or no? Okay.
It was, I thought you were, I thought you're going around in alphabetical order. It's fine.
We will go, is that okay with alphabetical order? That's?
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
That's like alphabetical order, can we go backwards? Start with Z?
Well, it makes it easy on me. I have it written down here, it's just so hard to do this. I have a whole plan here. So we'll start with Ms. Jackson. Ms. Jackson, could you please start with the questions?
Thank you, thank you to everybody for the presentation today. I could tell a lot of effort went into it. I had a series of questions and I tried to group them. And in no particular order, I'm going to start with the mask protocol to help me determine, you know, which option is best. I'm receiving a lot of questions, so some of these come from directly from parents and teachers. And the first one would be, what do we do when parents don't want their kids to wear masks? And then, and what if the kids don't want to wear them? And then go from there.
So not, I'll speak to that. Not, not all of those details have worked out, been worked out, and part of it will depend on which plan that you choose. So for example, if it's the all virtual, we obviously know what that is. If it's 25%, they can maintain six feet of social distance. They wouldn't, the guidelines don't require a mask except when they are in less than six-foot social distance, like perhaps during a passing period or something like that. If the board chooses to go to the 50% of the students and we have issues depending upon, again, the age, because it's 10 or younger that don't have to wear the mask. For example, if it's an elementary bus with the higher seats and it's the plan with 25%, they wouldn't necessarily have to wear the mask. That might be true also for some of the runs. We would have to see if we, if you went to the 50% plan. Unless the board just decided to override the guidance and say, we want everybody wearing a mask all day, every day.
My other question would be, would teachers have access to face shields? I'm concerned about the foreign language teachers, the ELL teachers, speech pathologists, and hearing attenuates. Or would they have access to the masks that are open that you can see lips?
So a couple of things, there's a new mask. I don't have any kind of rating, CDC rating, but I'm sure we have somebody working on that that are clear, that are supposed to help with that, that are supposed to be effective. But we will definitely be looking into, to that. And Keith Emon, the deputy superintendent, if you could just follow up on that, please. So again, I'm on like hundreds of hours of Zoom calls along with staff members. And one of the things that was very clearly made with the doctors in the Virginia Department of Health is that the shield in and of itself does not mitigate the need for a mask. So it can accentuate the protection if you have a mask. So we wouldn't expect unless, you know, they were back at least six feet, that we would have a shield only. In cases where we would use the shield would be more critical health issues like suctioning and different things like that, where if those kinds of devices are required, we will provide them. And again, we can further explore those areas and the mask that's coming out that's, that's over your nose and mouth that's clear.
I defer to the next person while we view my questions.
Ms. Lily Jesse.
Good evening. I, I'll tell you, I had, I had so many questions that I may come back. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. You know, I'm an impact person and the impact of this, there's a lot, I have a lot of questions like, who's going to do all this monitoring? Who's going to monitor these kids when they're in the classroom? Who's going to monitor the kids on the buses? Who's going to do the screening? Who's going to do all these things? And it just seems like I don't, and maybe the personnel piece is something that's going to come up later. But, and there are questions like the budget parts of it. I guess maybe not, Dr. Waltz, I just feel that, to be honest with you, I'm in a bind because we only have four or five days and the board's not been involved. So all the questions that I have, I can't ask these questions because we need to move ahead. And that bothers me. First of all, I want to say to the staff, I know a lot of these people and I know how much work you've done and how much work you've put into this. But having, the teachers have lots of concerns and I feel like tonight, I'm not going to be able to ask my slides that I've never seen. But the who, who's, who's paying for the mask? Are the principals going to pay for all the, are the principals being required to pay for certain things? Who's going to monitor these kids in the hallway? Who's going to monitor the kids during, I know it's a lot of questions, but they all kind of come into one big thing. Who's going to monitor those kids when they're eating? The high school kids, they're going to go through the line, but they're going to a room. Somebody has to do that. Why do we have in place support personnel to help these schools implement? It's not, to me, it's not about the actual plan itself. It is the how of this plan and the impact on teachers and staff and the budget considerations. The bus drivers, for example, they're going to be bus drivers with little kids on bus. Will there be somebody on that bus to help those bus drivers to monitor those little kindergartens and people who are going to get up and move around? It's the who, what, where, when, and how are we going to pay for it? And are we going to put this on principals knowing that they may not get the same number of teach students at the end of the year? At September 30th, they're going to have less money. What's going to be the impact on them budget-wise and staff-wise? Isolation room, who's going to monitor? So it's a lot of who's for me. Does that, does that make sense, Dr. Waltz, what I'm, what I'm feeling here? Because I, I've been out there and I know that we have beautiful plans and beautiful slides and beautiful presentations. And then all of a sudden, that the reality of who's going to do all this stuff and the impact on teachers and the principals and budget, how is that going to work? And I know we can't get that by, but that's my, sorry, I'm just, I'm overwhelmed.
No, no, that's fine. So Dr. Waltz, I think you can probably answer this in a couple of buckets. One bucket is the enforcement and sort of monitoring questions that maybe more broadly, you can answer to that. And then secondly, budgetary stuff. I think that would be the buckets in which Ms. Jesse seems to be asking those questions. And then, Ms. Jesse, we'll certainly come back to you for other things as we continue to go on tonight.
I appreciate it.
So let me just say that the bulk of everything you heard tonight and, and much more was what we sent out last Sunday. The slides are like a more condensed version of that. And we will also put all of that out to the public tomorrow. So they will have, they have the slides now, but we will have all that backup materials that we sent to you last Sunday as well to look at. But I think, you know, you've been a principal and so have I. So you're, you're thinking in terms of, hey, what about the practical day-to-day operational issues that thinking as a principal, I'm going to be responsible for. So I appreciate where that's going. So I don't know that we have every answer to that, but I can tell you that on the budgetary items, we would expect certain things to be ordered just like normal. If you need masks for your school, we have those in supply services. There are supplies and materials that are covered in there. We will make sure that if we have very specific, more complex PPE needed for something like the example I gave where a student needs suctioning, that we would make sure that, that we had a fund centrally that would help with that. If it's something like masks and gloves, that would come out of the supply budget. But certainly, you know, we will be constantly monitoring that. And whatever a building needs, we will make sure that they have and that they have the money for that. In terms of the buses, of course, we won't have near as many people on the buses. Most of the special needs buses have a, an assistant on that bus. And so, you know, that would be taken care of there. And I think I'm confident that we will go through training so we teach the kids where to sit, just like if you come into kindergarten on the first day, we, you, you're taught where to go and what to do. And that will be the school and the bus drivers will work on that. Again, if it's the 25% model, you're going to have 11 kids on a bus. And if you have the 50% model, there's going to be approximately double that. Also, just wanted to mention, one other thing is the materials that we talked about in the presentation are going, have all been posted to the website. So that will be available there. And then on hallways.
Your sound is gone.
My sound is gone?
Oh, it's coming back, okay.
Is it better now?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So again, on the mask and that, that you ask a very interesting question, one that I've played with a lot in my head as not only a former principal, but I was also a teacher for over a decade. And we're going to have to look carefully depending upon the plan you select, because we also don't want this to be an over disciplinary type of process where, you know, a kid who takes off their mask is going to be sent to the office because they weren't wearing their mask, but we're going to, we're going to have to have training in place. And I know Fairfax is already encouraging parents to start having their kids wear masks for a brief period of time because they're proposing everybody wear a mask. And to get used to that at home before they start coming to school. So I think that's the majority.
I guess the impact on teachers, for example, we said, we're going to keep everything clean. Are teachers going to be required to sanitize the areas? Or I'm just wondering if we could solve some of this by just hiring temporary employees to help these principals and teachers in these buildings. I'm just, I'm concerned that teachers are going to be just, the building is going to be overwhelmed with all the responsibilities of trying to keep the kids, trying to keep kids socially distanced. And it's not just the elementary kids, it's the high school kids too. And the high school kids who, if they are carriers and they're older, they can transfer, trying to keep those, you're going to need more people. And I think that the teachers and the principals are going to need a great deal more help. I'm just sitting here in my, my office thinking, I'm opening school with this whole thing and I'm just like, oh my God, I'm just overwhelmed. I wish we had had a lot more time to talk about this because the impact of this to me is just astronomical. And again, I want to say your people did a great, all the work that you've done. I do think in closing that PWA and all these other organizations and the board should have been included earlier. And with that, you can come back later. I'm just overwhelmed.
Okay, Ms. Jesse, thank you. You know what, it's my turn in the alphabetical order, but I will skip myself to allow the board members because I know they've been waiting a long time and I'll go at the end. Ms. Ralston? Ms. Diane Ralston?
Hello?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Are you still there?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Mine is similar to what everybody I know is thinking about the money, the funding for this. It's a big, it's a big expense. So is, do you think that we have actually pulled enough money in for all of this? That's number one. And the other is the medical services. Do we have a doctor on, on ready, set, go? Do we have one?
So yes, I can, I can speak to both of those. First on the money.
Waltz.
Can you hear?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, Mrs. Ralston. So first of all, on the money, we have the money that we have. And, you know, we've been saying for, I don't know how long, we've sent letters, you've come over to the board, we had our meeting with the supervisors. We're using our lobbyists to try to help get additional funding at the state and national level. So, but the bottom line is we have the funding that we have. So we, we may have to reprioritize some of that, just like we did in the spring to get the computer order and, and hope that we get some additional funding. On the other item, you ask about a doctor. Yes, we have, first of all, the head of our health team. So we have Teresa Polk, who I talked about earlier, but she also has a consultant with multiple doctors and health officials, both as a part of our school system contract that she can access or her team can work through her and Ms. Bellamy to access on a daily basis as needed, in addition to the health department and her excellent relationship with Dr. Anshur.
I think the layout for the school buses looks good to me. I'm not there, I haven't seen inside, but that's the one thing I want to make sure. Because you know, little kids have a tendency to be everywhere. So I would like to see that, see if they are actually sitting down and being in a particular area, the little kid.
So in response to that, I'm confident with the bus drivers because students have to be seated anyway. And we have cameras on every one of our buses. And Mr. Shiroki, thank you for bringing up the air conditioning because that's something I started the first year I was here. I directed them to order every new bus air conditioned and thank God, you know, it's now paid off because we can use that in combination with the fresh air to have a comfortable ride to school even with a mask. So does that help?
Thank you. And I know that all of your employees, all your head people, they have been absolutely wonderful this whole entire summer. So I thank them very much and thank you.
It's appreciated. And again, in a normal year with no mask and no COVID, we have very specific directions for how students must be seated on the bus. And again, we have cameras and a huge mirror. So I'm confident that we will continue to be able to do that effectively.
Okay, that sounds good.
Jennifer Wall? Ms. Wall?
Yes, thank you. Okay, I have, I have a couple of questions. My first question is, we've heard a lot from parents and community that we'd like to, that they would like us to consider a four-day in-person week or obviously like a five-day in-person week. So I note that in the four options we have, the number four was Plan Four Normal Model. And so the question is, would, if we were to move out of Phase Three and into kind of the future, let's say Virginia's numbers go down, et cetera, guidance becomes more relaxed, would we stick with a four-day a week model and continue our online as our fifth day? Or would we go to a five-day model?
So again, that would depend upon the guidance that we got from the different agencies we're required to adhere to. So it would be the governor's phase-in plan. And then that would also be aligned with the CDC and the Virginia Department of Health. So what happens is when we go from one phase to another, just like when we recently went into Phase Three, so you see all these protocols for how Phase Three will be implemented. And they first come out from the governor's office and then the Virginia Department of Health takes the CDC's recommendations, but then they evolve sometimes every day. So for example, just July 6th, which was Monday, you know, two days ago, we had several new things that were presented and, and an urgent call on Tuesday to all school superintendents from the state superintendent, Dr. Lane, talking about folding in and mitigating to a three-foot distance. So even when you have a plan that's out there for a phase, it's not until they move into the phase that they start getting really specific again, and then that usually evolves. And all of these groups that we take our guidance from are also involved with legal counsel from various groups as they, as they look at moving forward. But certainly, you know, if, if we were to evolve in something like that, I mean, our ultimate goal is to get the kids back in school five days a week.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, that's helpful. And one of the reasons why I asked that question is I know we'll always have kind of an online option for the kids who cannot go back in school, you know, immunocompromised or whatever. And we'll have an online option for teachers and it looks like that day is Monday. So I wondered if that would, you know, anyway, a four-day option would be possibly, possible in the future. Can I ask a second question, Dr. Latif?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So I know you had mentioned that we would vote on the starting date of September 8th. If schools, and in order to make that determination, I have a couple of questions. If schools were, are delayed for two weeks later, would that mean that we would end two weeks later in June? Or would it mean that we would then lose vacation days or spring break days? Or how would we continue to meet our 180-day instruction requirement?
Sure, so we discussed that in detail and I will defer to Dr. Casada, who, speaking of spring break, I believe is sitting in her un-air-conditioned home blistering hot. The air, it seems like everything happens all at once. I've had my issues in our house too, but Dr. Casada, if you wouldn't mind addressing that question, please.
Sorry, I just had, I had the light on, I had to turn it back off. Yeah, our air conditioning died in my house last night. So the good news is that, well, in Phase Three, if schools, the guidance from the state says that if schools are making adjustments to school days and school calendars to meet social distance requirements, implement mitigation strategies, including preparing for all of that, there's, there's a lot of waiver flexibility that's going to be allowed for that in terms of the 180 days and the 990 hours. What we don't know yet is that if the state moves out of Phase Three, as you mentioned, Ms. Wall, and we go back to normal operations, there will be an expectation at that point, but it'll be, what we do know is it'll be prorated. So if our year starts later, so as of right now, it doesn't look like, as long as we're making efforts to be opening and doing all of these things, it looks like in part of Phase Three, it looks like we would be all right. Like Loudoun County, for example, already approved a change and they're not changing their end date. So we're researching that, but the signs look very good for that unless something changes from the state. So we'll keep studying that, but right now, the guidance is that there's flexibility as long as it's in response to this crisis.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, and I'll come back around, so, so don't worry. Justin Wilk, Potomac District.
Thank you, Dr. Latif, Dr. Waltz and your staff. Thank you. That was extremely detailed and it's going to take, I think, a lot of us some time to digest all that and, and come back in our community as well. This first set of questions kind of goes with in general broad themes of the three options. And just to clarify, and if you could explain, because there seems to be a misperception still in the community and it's, you know, not worth trying to teach what federalism is and how what Georgia does or Florida does is very different than what Virginia does. And so can you explain again, why even if this board wanted to do five in-day, five days of in-person instruction, why that is not possible right now under the guidance from the state of Commonwealth of Virginia? That's my first question. I have two follow-ups with that, please.
Yeah, so in the, in the governor's guidance and the CDC, the Virginia Department of Health, your capacity is limited by the social distancing requirements. So if you set 100% capacity, there would be no way to mitigate that. And so a school system or a school board that did that would be absolutely opening themselves up in a liability way, in a huge way. I don't know if Council McGowan wants to weigh in on that at all or?
Dr. Waltz, while we wait, if she wants to join in. So in this plan, my understanding does have to be approved by the VDOE and the Virginia Department of Health, right? So if we did something like that and we proposed something like that, highly likely it would be rejected, correct?
There's no doubt it would be rejected.
Okay, okay. Just, just want to clarify and hope the newspapers are listening so they can emphasize that in these articles that are already going out. All right, that's, so to your second point, Dr. Waltz, you let it in.
I think Ms. McGowan is ready to respond.
No, I'm simply going to say that any legal questions about this are better discussed in closed session.
Thank you, Ms. McGowan. Dr. Waltz, to that second point about capacity, I went into two schools with a mask on this week to see setups for the six-feet, the three-feet requirements. I'm a visual person. Do we have, maybe this is a question for Mr. Chiroki, do we have, I know, I believe, some of the committee members of some of these task force have gone in and actually taken photos of classrooms set up for either the 25% or the 50% option? Do we have something like that readily available to show on the screen? I don't mean to put anyone on the spot, but I think that would be helpful when we talk about capacity. Do we have anything like that?
We don't, we don't have that available tonight, but yes, we had people go over. In fact, it was to one of your schools, it was to Forest Park and looked at the average-sized classrooms there. But we can certainly get some information from that and post that as well in the next day or two, yes.
I think, yeah, thank you. That would just, I think, be really helpful. I saw the diagram and I know Mr. Chiroki said it's very different than actually when you see the rooms themselves. And so as I went at the, one of my elementary schools this week, you're right, not everything. And even when you strip it down of everything as much as possible, there are still shelves, bookshelves, things that cannot easily be removed. So it's easier said than done to have that spacing. So thank you, that'll be helpful. The last point of all this is, so if we were to go with the 50% capacity, which puts it to three feet, does that then by requirements and regulations mandate mask?
Any place where we would, we would have less than six feet of social distancing, that would need to be mitigated by the wearing of masks.
Okay, so just for clarification for the parents watching, if we do 50%, two days of your kids in school, we would have to go to mask and mandate and regulate that.
Well, again, it, it depends on this specific class. Well, again, it, it depends on this specific class, um, you know, and the size of the classroom and the number of students who are in the classroom. So, I mean, we don't run very many classes with small numbers, but it's occasionally, there might be a class that runs at, uh, 20. So if that class then would have 10 students there and two of them are doing virtual, you've got eight students left. So it's conceivable that there might be some where that wasn't a requirement. But again, the general, um, requirement is if it's less than six feet, you're wearing a mask.
Thank you. And so a lot of this, I'm assuming if we gave parents the opt-out option for all virtuals, there'd be still TBD on some of this as we get into rolling out school just by sheer numbers of people who opt down and go virtual.
Correct. So, you know, again, back to the desire to have more time, let me just tell you that, that our staff, including me, nobody wishes we had more time than we do. The other issue is, again, as I mentioned in the beginning, we aren't staffed in central office anywhere close like Loudoun and Fairfax. So what it takes to pull all these things together and figure all these things out is, is enormous. But yes, to your point, we would have to go and look at those.
Okay. Now, those are my questions this time. Thank you, Dr. Waltz.
You're welcome.
Ms. Lori Williams, Vice Chair Lori Williams, Woodbridge District.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. Uh, I, I first want to just say, um, I, I am very impressed with the amount of work and, um, time and effort that's been put into this, um, to, can't reiterate the point enough. I've been saying it for several years and I will just say it again. We don't have the staff, just like Dr. Waltz says, by comparison to our surrounding counties. The fact that our staff was able to pull this off and put this together in this short of a period of time with a comparable plan, um, to our surrounding larger, larger districts deserves so much credit to the staff. I hope our VOCS is listening because again, this comes down to funding and staffing and our community is listening, especially the ones who are always against Kelly building staff. This is why you need more staff. I, I'm just praying personally that our staff does not burn out by the time school starts. With the amount of workload that they have undertaken, I certainly understand being a full-time employee, being school board now is a full-time job as well and being a parent. So I greatly appreciate the amount of work that's been put into this. I know myself, I've emailed staff at midnight and gotten a response and they're, and they're surprised I'm responding as well. I, I'm pretty sure all of the board members feel the same. This is definitely no longer a part-time job in any way, shape or form. So, um, I just want to start by saying that. I have a lot of questions, so I'll probably be coming back, uh, for a couple of rounds. But my first question, since we're on the topic of masks, is since we know that's the most effective, one of the most effective measures we have in preventing transmission, how did we determine that students under 10, don't need to wear a mask, especially when pediatric guidelines and things of that nature are stating children under two? I'm really concerned because elementary school kids, um, I, I guess have a reputation for being germ carriers the most. Uh, I know that they, we don't see a lot of transmission, but I'm also thinking that, and I'm not an expert, so I'll say that first. But, um, you know, we haven't had a lot of groups of small children together, um, since this pandemic started. So I'm a little concerned that maybe we just don't know that they're trans, that they're able to transmit, um, like older children and just where we got that termination for that age of 10. I'll just leave it at that question right now, and then I'll have a next, another question.
Okay. So, uh, one thing, and again, we posted this a number of times and we'll make sure that we post it again. And that's the connection to the, the document that I referenced at the beginning, which is from the Virginia Department of Education. And it's the, uh, the, the triple R document where it's returned. I don't have the immediate title off the top of my head, but it's the VDOE 135-page document. And
Okay.
that's aligned with the CDC. And so they're basically the ones that are saying, if you're 11, uh, 11 or younger, you don't have to wear a mask. They're saying absolutely no mask for two or younger. I, I, you know, won't stake my life on this, but I'm guessing that has to do with the possible choking hazard.
Right. No, I appreciate that.
That's not something we invented. That's all part of that plan.
No, I appreciate that. And I, and I know that for people watching, some of these questions may become repetitive, but that's often the same experience that we get when we answer questions from the public. So sometimes I don't, I don't think we can say it enough. So my next question.
Ms. Walt?
Go ahead, Dr. Walt.
Only other thing I might add to that is, uh, by the way, the, I just didn't have the order of the trip. I call it the triple R document, but it's recover, redesign and restart. And so in, in many of the communications we've sent out on our mass communications, we put that link and we will continue to do that. There's a whole section on mask wearing there. That being said, the board could make a determination to be more restrictive if they chose to.
Okay, thank you. And I'm going to move away from masks and talk about, um, equity and learning a little bit. So what I heard, um, that concerned me is the students who are doing distance learning only. So they choose this option. I'm concerned and I know it has a little bit to do with bandwidth, but, um, a few things on that. There, there doesn't seem to be a lot of conversation about emotional and, um, mental health support for the distance only students or any sort of assessments for them, like the students who are in class. And then also the, there's, doesn't seem to be any live teaching, uh, available for those students. So when we talk, I know a lot of professionals talk about elementary school students and needing the face-to-face. And, um, you know, we have different learning styles. So I, I'm just wondering if that could be added in and what are the social and emotional assessments for students who are distance learning only?
So, uh, I will let, I will defer that to Denise on the social emotional. And Denise, I don't know if, if you want anyone else to join you on that, but certainly we have a lot in place, but if you could just elaborate a little bit more.
Certainly. Um, we are fully prepared to provide counseling services, both virtually and in-person. All students would be participating in the, um, the online assessment. I can call Ms. Schleter up if you'd like to know a little bit more about that. Our staff members have been trained. We have lessons that we provide both in-person and virtually. So, um, even through our closure, we were able to perform our full functions of our counseling teams. The scheduling, the check-in, we provided, um, electronic ways for children to check out, to check in with us, to provide support as needed. So we are, we do stand ready through classroom lessons, both virtually and in-person, and have our tiered model where we would be allow small groups or whatever necessary, um, supports for children in the virtual environment.
So will there be like an assessment for the distance only children? So like, uh, maybe I misunderstood. It seemed that if you were in-person, children would be assessed. But I'm wondering if there's no live component to the distance only. Is it then up to the student or up to the parent to then have that responsibility? Or will staff be reaching out to provide an assessment for those students?
We certainly, yeah, I'm sorry. We certainly recognize the need to modify how we deliver our services and how we assess our students based on whether they're virtual or in-person. Once we know our format and the numbers, we will plan and provide additional details. But we certainly recognize that, yes, our students who are virtual, maybe even more so than our students who are having the face-to-face contact and the social interaction, we're very concerned about their mental health and their wellbeing. And we recognize that in a virtual environment, there are different stressors and, um, different things that impact our students. So we do have plans and our counseling team, they're already working and have lessons and, and a lot of different skills and professional development for our staff members to help our students. And I could get you the more specifics of that at a later time if you'd like.
Yes, thank you. And then the last question that I asked was, um, the, the live teaching for our students who are doing distance only, there doesn't seem to be that option for them in, in any way, shape or form. So I'm just, you know, on a, on a regular basis. So I'm really concerned about that for, um, those students who need that. And it seems like, well, maybe not in any way, shape or form, but it's only like one day. So I'm really concerned about the students who would need additional support and then not having that, um, with any sort of live teaching except for.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the very end of what you said.
The, the, yeah, because I think there's, they're, they only have that option on one day a week. Um, and that's sort of like a question to answer on, on a half day on a Monday, um, for the students who are doing distance only.
So again, uh, with the teacher, there's different things that are, that can be built in. So for example, if you're taking a regular online course, they have certain office hours and then they also have certain instructional hours. If for whatever reason you can't join them on the instructional time, that's recorded. But there's in-person on both the instructional part of it and also the ability to talk to that teacher and access them at a different time as well. And I don't know if there's any other staff member who wants to add to that. Ms. Goss? You're on mute.
Sorry about that. Uh, so I think, um, Ms. Williams, you're speaking about, um, those students who would be in that concurrent kind of distance only option, not to return in person. And, uh, you saw on the schedule that it said, uh, just some support of live virtual support on that Monday. And so, um, you're correct, we would like to have, um, more time as well. So please just know we made that, um, model based on the information we have right now on staff. And, um, which staff members, right now, we don't have a full accounting of which staff members would be returning in person and which staff members may be, um, at home. So there may be some other ways that we can creatively schedule, um, those students for additional time. Our goal is to certainly give all students, and I think you saw, um, in the other models, like even the all-virtual Schoolhouse, um, some significantly increased of virtual, um, live, um, interaction between students and, and that's certainly our goal. Having that interaction between students and teachers. So just know as soon as we have all of the information, we will get to work to see if there are other ways that we can creatively schedule to make, make that happen. So for now, we kind of assumed all folks will be returning in person, but, um, we know that that may not be the case.
Thank you. The next person.
Uh, Ms. Lisa Zargarpur, Coles District.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Latif. Actually, I'm gonna use, uh, we back up. Thank you, uh, everybody for all of your hard work. Um, I just, um, it, it, you gave a beautiful presentation. I hope I'm not being redundant. I'm gonna kind of ask for some clarification off of Ms. Williams' question because I think it would be more helpful if we were talking about online learning as synchronous and asynchronous rather than live. And here's why. Because we're going, we may have students who are going to choose completely online, which means we would need to know how much is there is synchronous learning and how much is asynchronous. And then we're going to have students who go to school for whatever day, say it's the 50%. So they'll be in school two days a week with, with a teacher live. But on their days home, will they be receiving any synchronous instruction or is it asynchronous? So if you could clarify that in, in that term, maybe that would help.
Rita, that, that sounds like a good question for you. Go ahead and unmute.
I'm going to keep myself off mute now.
While Rita is doing that, let, let me just say that the day that is available to contact teachers, the Monday, the, the way that that evolved was the, the big districts that we share students and employees across county lines that are the most affected are Prince William, Fairfax and Loudoun. Now that doesn't mean we don't have others because we certainly have Manassas and Manassas Park. But Manassas and Manassas Park said, look, if you're going to have one day where people can, they're not going to be live, but they can, they can, um, have synchronous conversations, counseling, uh, special additional instruction. We'd like to get that all on the same day. And so that's how the Monday evolved. And then for Manassas and Manassas Park, they said, you know, see, whatever you guys are going to do, we want to be with Prince William County. So it took us like two weeks just to get that worked out among, among all the districts. That does not preclude synchronous opportunities on the other four days, regardless of what plan you're on. And just to, just to make sure that everybody, I, I want to state that if you look at the return to learning plan, one thing that I asked the staff to do, and I'm, I'm pleased with the outcome, and this will be all online tomorrow. If you go to the back of that document, there's a glossary. So one reason we have been speaking more about live, and I understand the point that you're trying to make, is we're trying to talk in terms that most kids and parents and community members can understand. But the definitions are all on that, at the end of that document. So asynchronous, meaning not live, and synchronous, meaning, you know, a Zoom conference or that sort of thing. So take the, take the Monday that I already explained. Now let's talk about the other four days. With, teachers would be highly encouraged to have synchronous opportunities on those other four days. Just like if you are currently taking the finance course, um, through online learning. Like I'll, I'll just say in my own house, my daughter's doing that. So she has both synchronous and asynchronous opportunities. Let's say for whatever reason childcare, the student has to work to help bring money into the family. The time that that teacher is doing a synchronous opportunity, they're unable to dial in at that point in time or to do a Zoom conference or whatever the platform they use. That's also recorded, so it can be used at any time that's convenient to the student. So I just want to make sure that I'm helping to clarify what I think you're, you're asking me to do, which is it is encouraged on the other days as well.
All right. So this, this has to do with the scheduling then. So if we have, um, a, a teacher, I'm going to use elementary, uh, fifth grade teacher, Mrs. Fifth Grade. She's going to teach Tuesday, Thursday. I assume she's also there Wednesday, Friday, correct?
Yes, she's teaching the other students, the other 50%.
Right. So who is, who is managing the online content for the students when, when the students are home?
Okay. So that I will let Rita speak to. This has to do with all the different modules and things that they're, uh, putting together. Ms. Goss?
Absolutely. So, so a lot of that work goes back to the, um, summer preparation work that we talked about this summer, right? So that we're not asking teachers to create, um, all of that, right? Every ninth grade English teacher to create or really recreate those modules multiple times, right? We're doing that from central office. So a lot of that, um, online content is being created this summer. Then teachers will be able to go in and, and add that kind of customization, that personalization that allows, um, students to see their, uh, recorded content, their specific choice boards, uh, materials, resources, activities for their class. And they would be accessing that, that content, right? Both what was developed as a division in order to ensure that consistency, um, for all students taking the same course, as well as that teacher's kind of personalized, um, pieces of content that would be added to that. They would be accessing that, um, from home, uh, to use your phrasing, asynchronously for the most part, right? Although there might be times, uh, you heard, uh, Mr. Gilfoil speak about the bandwidth issue. So there would be staggered times in which, um, teachers could, um, have some of that, you know, live, live streaming or, or live, um, synchronous learning for students. And, and we would have to, you know, look at that, um, unique scheduling of that, um, that Mr. Gilfoil, um, talked about. Uh, so, um, basically that content, right, for the most part, the baseline of it is being handled by the division. And those 161 fabulous teachers that we have hired, although we need more, uh, I'll be honest with you, right? You could see all of, um, those are the ones that we're working with now and we're building out, um, that, that content as we speak. And it, it'll be ongoing work. Clearly we, it's a pretty, um, extensive amount of work. And so we'll be doing that all year long and trying to stay ahead of the next quarter's pacing.
Thank you for all of that. Uh, that was, I, I wanted to make sure we had talked a little bit about workload because, um, I know y'all know I'm a Fairfax County teacher. That was one of the things that, in the middle, yeah. That was one of the things that, um, it was not clear when we were going through this process. So I wanted to make sure that this was crystal clear for our teachers to be able to make informed decisions. The other thing, going to wear the hat again, um, what is the plan for art, music, PE, STEAM, STEM, whatever we want to call it in elementary? Given that if we're going to follow the American Academy of Pediatrics Guidelines and the CDC, that we're not moving cohorts of kids around, we now have to have specialists come into the rooms, I'm assuming. So you can, you can talk about that. And then separately, what is art, music, PE going to look like in secondary school? Because, um, Because we now have considerations of chorus and wind instruments are gonna have to be treated much differently than string instruments. You also have cleaning, just all that headache. It's my world I live in, but I know people need to hear the answer. So what have you guys come up with for that stuff?
So I'll address the art and the music. So first of all, we are going to the extent possible, try to minimize the movement of students. So for example, if a teacher has, let's say they wanna do something that involves keyboarding, and they, you know, they have a keyboard that they can take to a classroom or a set of the drums that they can take to a classroom. We can do that, but that doesn't necessarily preclude us at 25% or 50% occupancy for doing some of those things in the classes they were designed to do. So one thing that's very important to me, and again, I have an arts background, is to try to preserve the integrity of those programs. I'm aware of the concern around the issue of the wind instruments. And again, I'm gonna be interested in seeing if creative people, which I am, I will be shocked if they don't figure out some kind of gizmo on the wind instruments. And again, if, you know, if you're playing a trumpet and you're using your valve, your spit valve, you can't do that in the same way that has been done in the past. So we are certainly aware of those requirements as they, you know, and those concerns as they came out. We're also aware of the American Choral Directors' concerns around the singing. That wouldn't necessarily preclude a choir from going outside if the weather is right. And because of the fact that we'll be doing a lot of the lunches directly dropped off at classroom doors, we may be able to use some of our very large spaces with more distance because they're saying it should be at least 14 feet. I know the Choral Directors Association believes that they can only be doing it outside. And again, there might be a little bit of mitigation that can be done on that too. But it would absolutely be our intent to preserve the integrity of the arts to the extent we possibly can.
Thank you. Last question, a very broad teacher question. So I know you're gonna send out a survey about, and no worries, there's a bunch of HR questions I'm sure you're just waiting for at some point. But this one, there's gonna be a huge survey. We're gonna find out who is going to, absolutely, they cannot come into school. They've got immune system issues or whatever. And then you've got people who are gonna be really excited about getting back into the classroom. Somebody was like, ask this question, I'll ask it later. For the people who, I don't even know if you can talk about it at this point, but I'm gonna be honest with you, I'm just trying to head you off from what the stuff is that's going on with what we've done in Fairfax. The hierarchy seems to be if you have a personal issue, then that's one level of, we may grant you the ability to teach online. If you live with someone, you may or may not get that choice. They're working on those issues. I don't know if you've gotten that far, but is there any way you could speak to that process yet? Or what people can expect coming up? Because that's gonna cause a lot of people anxiety. We've gotten a lot of emails from teachers who are concerned about either their health or the health of a child in their house, or maybe they live with someone, a parent or grandparent who's older. So if there's any way you can talk to that issue at this point, I think that might hopefully help.
Sure. In the Return to Learn document, it lists what the, all these, the CDC and the Virginia Department of Education lists, there's a list, and it's actually grown over the past week or so, of basically issues that if you have one of those issues, that we will then work with that teacher to be able to have them involved in a way that doesn't require them to come in. And as Ms. White mentioned, if there are specific issues that are not as black and white as that, you know, or not as clear-cut as that, they can contact Human Resources and someone will speak with them. But again, all of that will be posted starting tomorrow, so you can, they'll actually be able to see that list.
Okay, good. Thank you so much. I just know there's gonna be a million HR questions. And I just, I know for a lot of people that being able to find out what they should or should not be considering is really important right now. And I know for our students and our families as well. But I know staff is particularly curious about how some of this is gonna work. Thank you.
Sure, you're welcome. And something else that we'll be doing is we're going to be starting to build a Frequently Asked Questions list. And we'll be starting that either the end or first of next week. And I think that will help as well. The VDOE has done that. And one of the things that they do is they put a number of links to things on certain questions where it'll go straight to the Virginia Department of Health website that lays it out. So we're gonna be putting some of those links in there as well.
Okay, great. I think it'll be my turn. So I'm gonna start with just a couple of quick points. You know, thank you, Dr. Walts. The, thank you for the, I wanna sort of shout out to our nursing and our health professionals in the system. I think the health plan has been, you know, is constantly and thoroughly being evolved even every day. And I appreciate that from Ms. Polk and Ms. Bellamy. I think it's important for everyone to know that we have a nurse in every school in Prince William County. And it is not like that in our neighboring counties, frankly.
That's correct.
I know Fairfax doesn't have a nurse in every school. So in many ways, you know, we are, you know, I'm, as a physician, frankly, impressed with the efforts our health system within the school division has been, what they've been doing. So thank you for that. Next, I'm gonna get to the heart of sort of my biggest concerns, and that's instruction. You know, outside of the fact that I told you all at the beginning that health safety is number one, obviously. But let's get down to instruction. And I think this question will go to either you, Dr. Walts, or Ms. Goss. And I know this was asked, but I need clarification on this. If you can, Rita, pull up, if you'd like, or Mr. Stevens, pull up the slides Rita had. But there's the virtual schoolhouse, which seems to me different than the distance learning. And I'm gonna go back to the questions they asked because I am very concerned about the lack of synchronous or live instruction on the distance learning. I'm very impressed, I mean, blown away frankly, by the 50% plan where it has students coming in two days. And then on the two days they're not there, there is remote synchronous learning. And I'm not sure why we can't offer more synchronous learning to our distance learning. And let me caveat my question by this point. We had shortcomings in the spring that we all recognized, that the public was concerned about. We had some great things that happened in the spring as well. But shortcomings in the spring with Zoom, you know, not consistent implementation of instructional efforts across the county was a big problem. And we've heard that from citizens as well. And I don't want to repeat that with our new distance learning program. And my concern with the lack of synchronicity or live sessions leads me down this sort of rabbit hole of a real concern of are we gonna repeat what happened in the spring? I don't think we will because I think Canvas is pretty good, but I need reassurances on that. And I also want more synchronicity in the distance plan. The reason we should have that, because if we fall back to having to close schools again, we're gonna fall back on that distance learning plan for everybody. And so that has to be synchronous, otherwise it is just, you know, I mean, to my concern is the lack of engagement with students will further isolate them at home who have chosen or their parents have told them they can't come in or they don't wanna come in. But the lack of synchronous activity, live engagement, will lead to even further isolation. And I think that's a real problem for their mental health. But I have to say, Ms. Goss, I'm very impressed with the 50% plan. I think that is an outstanding plan. And I like what you're doing with the days that they're not in school. But I really, you know, want to emphasize that for those who choose not to come in, we have to give them, in my opinion, if you can, can you address the reason for why we're not offering more synchronous learning? And Dr. Walts, I know you said it's highly encouraged. I'm not keen on the word highly encouraged. I, you know, I like mandated, scheduled, real sort of, you had a very nice schedule, Rita, of what it's gonna look like for those kids who are coming two days. But then the distance learning was like, okay, Monday here, you're gonna have a little live. And the rest of the time, we're gonna give you videos. But that is very concerning to me. So if you can address that, that's the heart of my major issues.
Ms. Goss?
Sure. So if you could just pull up Slide 21, please.
And when we get done with this, as those slides are being pulled up, we're going to have some pictures to share with you of the classroom setups. And we have Mr. Andy Jacks from Ashland Elementary, Principal, and Hamish Brewer, the Principal of Fred Lynn Middle School. And we'll show you some pictures and give them a brief opportunity as well once Chairman Latif has had his opportunity.
Ms. Goss, if you go to the virtual schoolhouse schedule, that seemed more interesting to me than the distance learning. Why is there a difference there?
So that's a great question.
I only have great questions.
Of course you do. So the virtual schoolhouse is different because that means, that would be a similar kind of school closure situation in which all of our teachers and students would be at home. Therefore, all of our teachers are available for virtual instruction, right? So because of that, we can have this common schedule. Again, different from how we ran things in the spring. But we can have this common schedule where all of those teachers, again, they're not on our Prince William County Schools Network. They're probably using other, right? This is not really my lane, my IT lane, but somewhere in the cloud, right? Using some other service, right? And they can run those live synchronous sessions, interactions, instruction with students at the same time. If you, so that's why you see all of this live instruction with students. If we're all on the virtual schoolhouse, meaning where teachers and students are all at home. If you could advance, just, let's go advance a couple of slides, please. So again, you see that on the virtual schoolhouse slides for high schools and middle schools. Again, we're all home, so all teachers are available for that learning. If you'll go forward to, let's go one more time. So if you'll pause, if you can just pause on one of these schedules, go forward, maybe one more slide, please. So if you think about this, right, on a 20 to 25% model, where you have students coming in person. So if you look on Tuesday, you would have these vulnerable groups of students, 1A and 1B coming, as well as Group 2 coming in person. If you're, again, we don't know which teachers we have, but assuming all of our teachers are doing in-person instruction with those classes and given our bandwidth issues, we can't have all teachers doing both things, right? Because we don't have the bandwidth to livestream for all classes simultaneously. And we don't have all teachers available to just do solely virtual synchronous or live instruction. So that's why you see a difference between some of these models and the all-virtual schoolhouse because of the availability of teachers as well as the limitations of our, what I'm gonna say, technology. However, after we get some more information around the, kind of that human resources information around our employees, which teachers are coming back, we may be able to look at some creative scheduling for teachers in which we would perhaps have some teachers who could be devoted to give what you're talking about, that more of that live synchronous instruction to all distance students. Of course, as Dr. Walts has already said, it is always, it is our goal to give as much teacher and student interaction as is possible.
Okay, so I, and I know that it's hard to know what distance is gonna look like when you don't know the numbers of students that are gonna choose distance. And so you're unsure about the staffing for distance. But I really would say that, you know, the virtual schoolhouse schedule is great. And I guess my thought was that if we're gonna offer 100% virtual for students who are gonna do that for the year, I would like that distance learning to look like what we want with the virtual schoolhouse. It seems to me that that would be better, more synchronicity, and maybe more equitable in a sense. And so here's where I would say that, you know, for example, you would need less teachers to do that. And you might have, you certainly have bigger class sizes. For example, a calculus teacher from, say, you know, Woodbridge High School could be the calc teacher for 50 or 60 students on a synchronous learning model, right? And maybe he doesn't do in-person teaching. Maybe he's at home because he has a health problem. And he's gonna do the virtual calc courses for those students. And I know it's hard to plan that, but, you know, that is something that I think we need to move in that direction. Otherwise, I, again, I have those concerns as I pointed out earlier.
So let me just respond to that. So we are in agreement on what you're saying. What will help us the most to make that possible is as soon as we have a sense, like hopefully tonight, that we will know what you think you're going to vote on. And then we can move forward with the planning. And also, we'll be identifying the number of teachers that are gonna be there. But we understand your point and we agree.
Wonderful, Dr. Walts. I just appreciate that. I just want to, you know, I think all the work that has been done, it's clear. And I'm glad it's there. I just, that's my major concern, and I thank you for understanding that. And again, I reiterate this, highly encouraged versus mandated. And I will say this, most people know I'm not the biggest fan of site-based management. And my concern for site-based management in a virtual model is, you know, off-the-chart serious concerns. And so I have a lot of trust in sort of our staffing and to put together a plan. But the implementation of that plan to be consistent across the board is my deepest concerns as we move forward. And I think you all know that, and you've answered that. Thank you. I think I will go on back around. Thank you for those answers. We'll go to Ms. Jackson.
Before Ms. Jackson, if you wouldn't mind, we could, Jason, if you could bring those photos up. We were able to get them already. And we can share the furniture.
Yeah, while you're waiting for those photos to come up, Dr. Walts, I will say that I do know, and I've heard that in Fairfax, they've announced the 50 plan, that they're gonna go two days a week, and then they have the virtual plan. And students are now having to register for that. And my understanding is it's about two-thirds picking the live 50, you know, two days a week, and one-third wanting to stay home. And I think if those numbers are similar to what we may end up having, you know, maybe 75-25 or 80-20 or 66-33, that gives you, what I think you're telling me, much more clarity on what you could do with the distance learning.
You are exactly correct.
Right, right. And so that's what I, I think it's very important for the board and everyone out there to understand, you know, this is extraordinarily challenging. But and there's been a lot of work that's gone into this. And I have to tell you, thank you for showing the different plans, the virtual 100%, the 25, the 50, and the fully in. But I think this is critical for us to make this sort of decision sooner rather than later and come to a consensus. So I will let you show the pictures. Thank you.
And since, can I just add, since these are, this is by my request, and I appreciate this, Dr. Walts. And if we can put this online again to show again why these are the state guidelines and why all districts in the Commonwealth of Virginia have to comply by these guidelines, that would be helpful.
And enjoy yourself.
Oh, thank you, Diane.
Yes, I'll ask Mr. Guilfoyle to make sure that we do that. So we'll turn it over to Andy Jacks, Principal of Ashland.
Oh, yeah.
Good evening, everybody. Evening, Chairman Latif and entire board, Dr. Walts. Thank you for all the work you're putting into this. Chair Latif and entire board, Dr. Waltz. Thank you for all the work you're putting into this really tough decision. I want to say again, thank you for allowing principals and teachers and staff to give input to this, uh, really hard thing that we're definitely gonna come up with some good solutions to, but tough to work through. So I want to give you sort of a, a practical view as to what a classroom looks like if you add some social distancing to it. So I'll start with tables and then I'll go into desks because many of our schools have tables now instead of desks. In fact, in my school at Ashland, most of our classrooms are tables only. So if we were going to use desks instead of tables, we would have to borrow desks from other schools and share around, which I'm confident that we could come up with a solution for that. But first I want to look at if we were to use tables, what that would look like. In a first grade classroom like this, which is pretty similar to any of our first through fifth grade classrooms, uh, with size, this is about eight hundred square feet, which is equivalent to most of the classrooms, first through fifth grade. The kindergarten classrooms are a little larger, so you can fit more students in kindergarten. So in this classroom, it can get up to twenty-eight students as a max class size. That is not our ideal situation. I know the board has been working really hard to reduce the class size, which we greatly appreciate. Um, in this case, we can have up to twenty-eight kids in a class at first, which we have had. Um, and sometimes it does get to that point in many grade levels. So this is what it looks like with tables, including a rug. Um, something you have in a classroom typically is also a kidney-shaped table for a reading group. And this is kind of what your typical situation looks like, including on the right side, you have a computer station. Keep in mind, a classroom like this also has a bathroom, a shared bathroom, that you can see the door in the top left corner that is shared with another classroom to, uh, in this case, the, the, uh, the rear, the picture, the back of the picture. So if you go to the next s- slide, please. So here you have about fifty percent now. This is sixteen students. Again, you could potentially have less if you add a smaller class. So if instead of twenty-eight students, if you had, you know, twenty-four students, then fifty percent would obviously be twelve students, so you could remove some tables. But this gets into more of a three-feet distancing. So you're seeing no reading table or carpet. Those are now gone. All the sort of personal materials from teachers are gone. We wouldn't be using the cubbies and the hooks on the side because we'd probably have stuff by the, the tables and the chairs for the students. If you go to the next slide, you'll see now what this looks like six-feet distance with tables. So with tables, it's very difficult because you can't arrange them in too many different orders to get the spacing that you really want. So in this case, this would be eight tables, which would give you eight students. Um, for us, one thing I should note out that many schools like ours have these twelve-foot tiles on the bottom of the floor. You can see there, each one of those tiles is, uh, twelve inches. And each tile, then, you can sort of measure these out pretty easily from student to student. So you can see here how many students is probably reliable in order to get into a classroom at the elementary level. Keep in mind that the bottom of the picture is where the teacher's desk is. And sometimes that's a difficulty in the classroom because you have all these student areas. But then you also have to account for where the teacher desk is and where the teacher is actually instructing the students. There's also, you lose space in between tables and chairs whenever you add more students. So if you go to the next slide, you'll see what this looks like with desks. So going back to, if we have a hundred percent of our students in, this would be twenty-eight students, again, max class size. If we have less students, you'll see less desks, obviously. This is all spaced out, which we would generally want. In most of our classrooms, if we do have desks, they're typically grouped up together, groups of four, groups of five, something like that. So it creates more space to transition around the classroom. In this case, you're losing a lot of that transition space. You're only really getting about two feet of distance between each desk. Again, it gets tight by the water, by the, um, by the sink, by the front of the classroom and even by the bathroom. Um, so those are some to keep in mind when we're looking at how many students we can put in a room. So this is twenty-eight students. If we go to the next picture, you'll see, again, this is at fifty percent, this is about seventy-two percent, but we're trying to max out the classroom. So how many kids can we get in with three-feet distancing now? So if we go to three-feet distancing, we're getting about eighteen students. Um, if we do that, then you can get obviously over fifty percent capacity. Um, but you're looking at how tight these now become. There's not much space in between these desks. Um, again, by the bathroom, by the front door, by the front, um, instructional area with the teacher. And so all these students would transition throughout the day potentially in that tighter space with that many students. If we go to the next slide, you'll see now with the six-feet distancing, you'll see that there's a lot more space and this definitely looks more safe. It's much harder to get students into the classroom and have as many students. We're looking at thirty-nine students, or thirty-nine percent, I'm sorry, students in the classroom at a time, which is typically about ten or eleven students. Now, in this case, we can be creative. I know that schools will do everything they possibly can based on the plan that you provide, that you decide on for us. We'll do everything we can to make this work in our classrooms. In this case, what we would do probably is use that computer station in the back. And this is where it gets tight with classrooms. So like in this case, if I added another desk in the back of the room, it wouldn't be six feet apart. It would be closer to five feet apart. But if I have a student sit at the computer station and then I space out the other two desks, then I can get those desks spaced out appropriately. Um, so in this case, you have about eleven students. So that, that's what your typical classrooms are gonna look like at the elementary level. There are many schools like Ashland that have the exact same footprint. So Rosa Parks, uh, Mary Williams, um, Signal Hill, a lot of elementary schools have the same exact footprint. And one of the things that we recommended is that no matter what plan is chosen, that we would work together, not only as an elementary group, but in like schools, we would work together, come up with some common solutions to some of these problems. So I hope this helps to give a, a visual to, uh, what we've been talking about tonight.
And it's Mr. Brewer. Thank you, Mr. Jacks.
Welcome Brewer.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Waltz, uh, Chairperson Dr. Latif. I appreciate the opportunity um, to be able to take a minute to share and, um, super excited about the work that we're all doing together here. And Prince William with our colleagues and leadership and, and everybody else to ensure that, you know, we can be successful come August, September and, and do what's best for our kids. So, um, if they have, uh, my pictures up, um, Dr. Jacks hit on many of the, ma- many of the great points, um, that, uh, I was gonna make as well. So thank you, Dr. Jacks. Um, you know, at the middle school level, uh, we often have, uh, a slightly smaller, uh, footprint for our classrooms than, say, in elementary. Um, and I know that having been in both, both an elementary and a secondary setting, um, our footprint is somewhere around seven hundred and forty-five square feet for, for a classroom. Um, so when you start taking into account, um, not just, uh, social distancing, but also body types, um, size of our children, um, you know, we've got seventh and eighth graders that are well into six-foot, big, 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 big gentleman and, and things like that to consider. This room here is a, say, a typical sixth-grade classroom. Um, we're looking for about fifty percent capacity. This is a big sixth-grade classroom. Our sixth-grade class footprint is bigger than our seventh and eighth grade, so we definitely have a difference between sixth-grade footprint and seventh and eighth grade. And you can see on this slide that, um, it's one of the last remaining classrooms that we have desks in. And as Dr. Jacks, uh, referenced, a lot of us across the school division would implement, have to implement a program of, of some sort of sharing to, to help, um, cater. But uh, right here, you can see I can easily get to eighteen to twenty students at fifty percent. But that's at three, three feet distancing, using existing tables and allowing for, uh, space at the front of the classroom for teachers. Um, keeping in mind, um, once a student gets up, it certainly changes that free, uh, three-feet, uh, social distancing aspect pretty quickly. So if we move to the next slide, you'll see what happens when that classroom now becomes six feet. Uh, you can see the dramatic difference of six-feet distancing and, and what I found, having done this exercise in my classrooms was that when you went from three feet to six feet, typically you, uh, gained an extra row of, uh, of seating for students. So, um, it, it took away or added one extra row of, uh, seating based on a, a three-feet or six-feet, uh, floor pan for students. When I get down to six feet, uh, you're talking, uh, at, at max twelve, uh, twelve students unless you start coming up with some, um, you know, unique scenarios where, uh, computer tables and things like that are utilized. So uh, if we move to the next one, I believe it's a science classroom, a sixth-grade science classroom. Uh, this is it, this is at three feet. Um, I want to emphasize the tables a little bit because, um, when buying furniture for us, for a school, um, nothing, no furniture comes at about a six-feet distance. It's all somewhere between about five feet and you will find that our desks, our round tables or our rectangular tables are to five feet, five and a half feet, um, diameter, which makes it incredibly difficult to uh, maintain that. But, uh, this shows you at three feet, sixteen students. Now, once we, um, condense that down, we're talking about getting back to sizes of ten or twelve, which gets us back into that thirty percent range, um, um, that we're looking at. So that was just a science room uh, for sixth grade. And as you get to the, uh, seventh and eighth grade, they change a little bit too. But if you go to the next one, uh, this is a typical seventh and eighth grade classroom at, um, at, uh, Fred Lynn Middle School. A lot of our colleagues at the middle school level are moving to, um, uh, tables like this where we have collaborative settings for, um, great learning, obviously, when everything was what we, what we thought of as normal. Uh, but what you can see here is this is a three-feet model. Now, my right, round tables here work excellent and I can get to eighteen students here and meet a fifty percent. Um, but those tables are only depending on if you're at the corner of it, a five and a half feet, or once you get into the ink cove there, you start looking at a five-feet distance. At three feet, we can maintain, we, we can make that happen, including keeping the front of the class. Now, if you move to the next one, this shows you what happens when we go to the six-feet model. No longer do my tables help me out a whole lot. They become much more, uh, that becomes more difficult task of, um, being able to build capacity, but we can come up with unique and, uh, we can, we have a great division for coming up with great answers to how we would reestablish, being able to maybe even add in some more students. But because this footprint is so much smaller in our seventh and eighth grade classrooms, we can only get to eight students here, uh, which is, which is definitely cutting it close to the twenty-five to thirty percent model. Uh, that being said, uh, we have, um, the ability to change out some tables, uh, with some sharing with our awesome colleagues and coming up with positive solutions with our, uh, desks and things like that. But, um, a shout out to our amazing custodians who've got that floor shining and ready for, uh, students to return uh, as we get excited for that. And I definitely appreciate the opportunity to share and, uh, work with my amazing colleagues and, uh, leadership here at Prince William. Thank you, folks.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Brewer, and thank you, Dr. Jacks, for, uh, sharing that in such short notice. And with that, uh, we will go back. I believe it was Ms. Jackson.
Correct. Ms. Jackson, thank you.
Thank you for the pictures and, and it was good to see the classrooms. Um, I think it should be noted that some of those classes only had one teacher desk in there and sometimes there are two teachers in a, in a classroom and a special educator, for example, who's co-teaching would need their own desk. Um, on that, um, matter, I have some questions about, um, ELL, special ed and vulnerability. Um, so I know we're supposed to keep, um, students pocketed, pocketed together. So how does that work when, um, when a teacher, I think, you know, pushes in, like special ed provider pushes into a classroom and they go into multiple classrooms, so they're exposing themselves to multiple different settings. What safety protocols are in effect for those teachers? And then I have the same follow-up questions, um, about related service providers.
Who would like to take that? Ms. Ebner?
Sure, Dr. Waltz, I'll be happy to. So it would be expected that all of our teachers maintain the same social distancing and safety protocols. Um, I understand the concern about, um, moving from one classroom to the next. Really, our mitigation strategies are consistent in that our expectation would be the wearing of the face mask by our staff members and appropriate PPE, maintaining the six-foot distance in all, um, possible scenarios and that other strategies to mitigate if that's not possible. One of the things that we have to keep in mind is it's, it's difficult, especially with our special education students at this time, to come up with an actual this is what it looks like, because the nature of special education is exactly what is referenced in the IEP, the Individualized Education Plan. And until we have a better handle on knowing how many students are coming in and what those services look like for our special needs students, um, we can't come up with specific scenarios, but we understand the need to en- enhance our safety protocols and ensure that when we schedule, we do so thoughtfully to minimize the number of, um, transitions that our teachers would have as well.
Um, so a follow-up, um, when you're scheduling, and I just, I'm thinking about the traveling teachers, um, either Signet or APE and, um, the, the lot of them serve, you know, sometimes a dozen schools. How, um, how would, how, like, can you talk to how you would schedule that and the safety protocols?
So I have to tell you that I wish I had better answers and more specific answers for you. Um, we recognize that it's a challenge and I think the idea would be to cluster and obviously, um, consistently have the same groups of children and the same, um, teachers working with those same groups of children in order to minimize the number of, of exposures, um, contacts per person and per, with our students. But really, until we see, um, what our, our special education parents' needs are and our students' needs are and what the options would be, many of our activities are going to have to be modified. Um, we recognize that, for example, physical education is gonna have to look extremely different and adapted PE would look, um, very, very different. And it depends individually on each child's needs. A lot of our adapted PE is delivered actually, um, one-on-one in situations. So we would have to evaluate the safety needs of that and really adjust and adapt our IEPs accordingly. Um, so I do recognize what you're saying and, and the scheduling challenges that lie ahead for us. Um, it also depends on the staffing that we have available, the staff members that are able to come in. But we intend to get extremely creative and very solution-oriented. Um, the more information that we have, the more we're gonna do in order to provide you with better and more specific answers.
Okay, so the follow-up on that, if I understand the twenty-five and the fifty percent, the four days a week, you have vulnerable groups going every day. So I, I'm, uh, could you please explain the types of vulnerable groups, like one A, one B, one C? And, and, cause I'm concerned, because I have, there are schools where there's, that's gonna be more than, possibly, depending on the definition, more than twenty-five percent or fifty percent. So I'm just kinda, I'm curious.
Okay, so I would probably turn that question over to Ms. Goss when you're talking about the different groups of vulnerable students and speaking to the specific special education students that would be attending four days a week. Um, those are higher, uh, low incidence disabilities, our kids that are, have, um, a large amount of special education time on their IEPs or specialized classes, where, um, that's a little bit more concrete and those students would be returning to the same class and in the same setting. But I will turn over the A, B, C, D scheduling to my fabulous colleague, Ms. Goss, who I know will have the answer for you.
I can't hear you. I'm on mute again. I'm so sorry. Um, that mute button.
You can always hold your mute button too. If you wanna talk when you're muted, that's a quick fix.
Excellent, thank you. So, um, let me first say that the, the vulnerable students, um, have not been, you know, totally determined. So those groupings that you see um, on the, on the page, we're gonna have to really look at exactly what you just said, the numbers. That's why the work that, uh, Mr. Guilfoyle spoke about with the hub team uh, and the scheduling, looking at those scheduling models is going to be very, very important for us. Uh, we certainly are looking at, um, our, our students with disabilities. We're looking at our English learners who are, are newcomers, are level ones and level twos, right? Those uh, the students who typically get more service time than other students. And we're looking at others. Uh, but clearly with the social distancing, we cannot fit all, um, students, um, in categories, uh, that the state outlined for us to consider. Um, in schools, or we, um, in many places would be at a hundred percent capacity. Uh, so, um, that's why, um, those, uh, folks who are working in IT and accountability, looking at those, um, models of groupings and how we can have, um, heterogeneous groupings and still prioritize, um, students for, uh, those additional days of, uh, in-person learning are gonna be really important to us. And so, um, that work is ongoing as we, as we speak and as we get more and more of the, that information and get a good look at the the numbers. But again, those numbers depend, um, much on the, the actual model that the board decides on, right? Once we decide um, how many students, what the capacity model is, uh, then we can appropriately adjust. Um, until we're trying to capture, um, our goal is to capture, uh, as many vulnerable students as we can for as much in-person instruction as possible. If we are in person.
Okay, I think that's it. I have, I have a lot more questions, but I kinda grouped them, so I will when it comes back around. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Jackson. Uh, Ms. Jessie?
Okay, I think I'm on, I'm on. Um, okay, I'm gonna take my, uh, shot. Uh, I'm gonna read this number. Seventy-eight point, seventy-five point eight. That is what people were concerned about. They're concerned about the safety of their kids. They're concerned about instruction, yes. But they're mostly concerned about the safety of their kids. Parents, teachers, and teachers are saying they're just scared to come back. And I wanna, you know, when you think about, when people think about Lily Jessie, they think instruction. And generally, I'm always instruction first, instruction first. But I've been in the trenches, guys. I've been in the trenches. I've been in the trenches and I'm going to tell you, I have worked with the best teachers in the world. Teachers are going to do what they do. They're going to make it work. But they're telling us that they're concerned about all the additional responsibilities that are. And I know that Lori talked about central office, I've been at central office. You guys did a phenomenal job. You had slides up and slides up and slides up and slides. When I say I'm overwhelmed, when I say I'm overwhelmed, because every one of those little, uh, every one of those slides affects, has an adverse effect on someone. It means more work for someone at the building level. If I'm a principal right now, I'm thinking all the work, it's not just putting those tables and chairs, it's all the work. So I'm just going to list some of the things that I've, I've looked at. Okay, somebody has to monitor first. Teachers coming in and parent, all the staff, there's a form, somebody has to monitor that. Somebody has to monitor the cafeteria, the kids are leaving, going out, when are the teachers going to eat? Somebody has to, there are two buses, I've noticed that we talked about one bus load and another bus load and another bus load. Somebody has to be out there to monitor that. Somebody has to monitor the classroom. Somebody has to monitor the isolation room. Somebody has to monitor the bathroom. We want them to sanitize the desk. We want them to take, somebody has to take temperature checks. Then there's buses, just buses missile. You haven't lived until you have buses missile and the buses come late. You got all these kids, they all have to be socially distanced. So what am I saying here? I am saying that this new, this, this virus is causing us to not engage in what we call best practices. Best practices says that children learn best by interacting, be involved in project-based learning where they have hands-on, some kids are visual, some kids are auditory. We're not going to be able to do what we would normally do in terms of mean instruction. And I know Dr. Latif and everyone is concerned about instruction. He's a doctor, he's a physician. We all know the moment something happens that we didn't put it up in something to monitor and make sure those kids are safety, safe. It's not going to be about instruction, guys. It's going to be, did we keep them safe? The teachers told us that, the parents told us that. So I would say to you that I will not sign off on any plan unless there is some effort by Dr. Waltz and his staff and the budget officer or whomever to provide additional aids for transportation. You got to clean buses and all these additional responsibilities. Custodians, custodians have all kinds of responsibilities. Now they've got to run from classroom to classroom to clean up the, you guys talking about. And health aids. So I would like to see that we put in place
We ourselves.
Additional support in the form of health aids. Maybe one or two per building, some type of temps with the temporary money. So we can support these principals and these teachers and create a safe environment and make that number one. You know, I love student learning, but at the end of the day, we have to keep kids safe. And that's it. I can't sign off on a plan until I know we have something in place. Dr. Waltz, when we were talking about, um, the, the renaming, we said, we find the money. I'm telling you, find the money to give these teachers and those schools the support that they need, because teachers need to have time out of their rooms, they can't eat with these kids all day. So that's my shot. Thank you.
Dr. Waltz?
Well, I, I would certainly encourage you, um, to work with the Board of Supervisors to see if they're willing to provide any more assistance. We've certainly multiple times, um, asked.
Well, I would encourage you to find money in other places if they don't come up with it. I don't know what temps cost, but there are so many people looking for work now. I think we can find, but we haven't, uh, to me, it's the number one priority is to create people who are going to monitor those kids in bathrooms and hallways. Principals and, and teachers can't, they've got to keep the kids in their classroom. I'm try, I'm just putting you, I'm just walking through my day, what my day would look like as a teacher. I've got to keep my kids socially distanced in my classroom. There's some kid wants to go to the bathroom. So who's going to monitor him in the hallway? Who's going to make sure he's safe? So I'm just saying that I think they need some help. I don't know where you would find the money. If you're just saying that the only way you can do it is through them, that's one thing. I'm just asking you to do that and to look at some way of finding, some way of supporting, uh, health and safety and the workload we're putting on teachers and principals in these schools. And to the people at Central, I know what it means to put together those presentations and I know it didn't happen overnight, so I'm not minimizing your work at all. I'm just trying to look at both sides and I hope you guys can understand that. Thank you.
Okay, great, um, Ms. Ralston?
Turn your mic on. Her mic.
Ms. Ralston, can you unmute?
Yeah, is that, does that work?
Good, yes, it works, yes.
Oh, okay. Still, my only thing is really, uh, making sure that there's enough funding to pay for everything that we're, that we have going at this moment. And I think I'm just a little nervous about that. So I, you know, if anybody can tell me that there's something else that I can do to take away the, you know, the nervousness, I support everything that you guys are talking about tonight. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ralston, uh, Ms. Wall?
Yes, thank you. So I just want to say, um, before I forget, or if I don't get another chance, thank you to all the people who worked, teachers, principals, support staff, everybody, central office, who worked on those task forces, um, and put together all of this great work. It's just amazing and tremendous. And I know it's been a marathon and will continue to be so throughout the rest of the summer. So I just want to say thank you. I have a bunch of short questions, so hopefully I can go through, I won't go through all of them. I mean, I have a lot of questions, but I'll just like pick some, does that sound okay? My first question, um, is just, Dr. Waltz, could you just briefly recap for the benefit of those watching? Um, and also just to make sure everybody's on the same page, the, um, how are three options compared to what, uh, Loudon and Fairfax are doing? And maybe if you know what Fauquier County is doing, um, if they've already determined, I don't know. I mean, I know we don't often compare ourselves to them, but we do have a lot of people who live in, maybe live in Fauquier County who's, uh, you know, who teach in our schools or, um, or, you know, anyway, they're a neighboring county as well. If you could just briefly just give us the highlight of what we know about what our neighbors are doing.
So, uh, before I do that, if, if I could ask Keith Emon, I think we had someone else made, perhaps researching some of that. I can tell you what, basically what Fairfax and Loudon are doing. So Loudon has already voted on their model, which is, uh, fifty percent capacity, bringing back fifty percent with the same type of scheduling in terms of having, uh, Monday be, uh, no in-person. And, um, Fairfax is presenting that same kind of, uh, plan with the fifty percent capacity and the Monday being, uh, non-in-person. And then, uh, I, I can assure you that Manassas and Manassas Park are waiting on our decision. And I am, I will just say, I'm sure that they're leaning toward adopting what we do, but there's no guarantee, I can't guarantee that. But on numerous occasions, they've talked about aligning with what our school board decides to do. So, uh, Mr. Emon, I don't know if you have anything further about, uh, Fauquier?
Uh, sorry to say, Dr. Waltz, good evening, Dr. Latif and Vice Chairman Williamson, members of the board. Sorry to say, I don't have anything, uh, for this evening on Fauquier. It, uh, I can say that we were not able to find, even though we haven't been able to confirm across the entire state, that, uh, no one that we're aware of is doing the five-day return. I know that Mr. Wilk and others have asked questions about, so I'm pretty confident there. But, um, we can, we're, we're continuing to gather some data. So the, the, the ones that we focused on this morning were the ones that you've talked about, but, um, we're still gathering data.
Okay, thank you. Um, I had another question kind of along the lines of the, the return to work and some of the teacher aspects. Do we know what teachers are going to be doing for their lunch break? Are they going to be expected to eat lunch with the kids in the classroom? Are they going to have their, like, contractual time to have a little bit of non-child time? Or, I mean, I, I don't really know, but can you, can you speak to that particular aspect, particularly with lunch?
So I don't know if one of the elementary associates or one of the other level associates wants to speak to that. Mr. Provincio?
Yeah, yeah, that's an excellent question. It's very pragmatic and, and I, I do think it's a concern that some of our principals and teachers have talked about. You know, we're all trying to be exceptionally creative with the parameters that we're given. Uh, we want to have duty-free lunches for our teachers and our staff as much as possible. But we also understand that we have teacher assistants that are going to, um, that we fought very, very hard to continue to maintain employment, you know, throughout this crisis and we want to continue to do so. So, you know, we've looked at all kinds of different possibilities and different kinds of, uh, parameters and structures where teacher assistants can provide, uh, support for our teachers, uh, potentially cafeteria staff can also, our hostesses can kind of come in and provide some structures and some staff, uh, structures and some, uh, you know, uh, relief during those times. So, uh, our, please know that our principals are diligently looking at those potential perspectives, uh, about what to do to help our, our teachers out.
Okay, great, thanks. Um, I wanted to make sure, um, that I understand the option for teachers, um, to teach, um, only online. I mean, if there's a teacher who has maybe a health concern or a family member that requires that they can't teach in school, is that available for Plan Two or Plan Three, as well as, um, obviously the virtual schoolhouse option? I just want to make sure that's clarified, that teachers would be available to opt into, and in either plan, correct?
Yes, they, they have to meet the criteria that's laid out in, uh, in the documents. I know I've spoken to this once, but I think Ms. White could give a little bit more detail.
I just wanted to answer your previous question, build on what Mr. Provincio said. Right now, the Virginia code mandates that elementary teachers have a thirty-minute unencumbered lunch, but no one knows if there will be changes in processes such as that while we're working through this challenge. As far as what are, what can teachers do if they want to work virtually? Once we get our assessment out next week and we know by teacher, by school, by position, how many of them are willing to come back, how many of them have health conditions that preclude them from coming back, uh, or need a certain accommodation in order to work? We, we and principals will be in a much, much better position to look at our student needs and make sure that we can place those who must teach virtually, uh, in those positions. If we get to a point where we can have more choice, when it's not based on a medical condition or a family medical condition or a child's medical condition, you know, then we'll explore that app option too. Because once we can meet our students' needs, then we want to meet the needs of those people who come to work every day to teach them, right?
Okay, thank you. I have one more teacher-related question, if it's all right, if I ask, kind of stay on this theme.
Sure.
So, um, will, uh, Alpha, I, I think it's Alphabet? Um, be available for staff, um, with kids, um, during that? Looks like our, our, our period of time is now going to be a week or so longer before school, before kids return to school. And I don't know in the past if teachers had the option of, of having assistance with childcare during that time period. But, uh, could you speak to that, if that's going to be something that will be available to them? Or if they'll be kind of responsible to figure out their own childcare arrangements during that time when school hasn't yet started, but they're, you know, they're recording.
That's a great question and I'm going to defer to Ms. Heebner, who has done a lot of work with Alphabet.
And while Ms. Heebner is coming online and getting off mute, um, we are, I'm informed by Deputy Superintendent Emon that the Fauquier Board will meet on July thirteenth to hear the administration's proposed plans for Fauquier.
Okay, thank you.
So, good evening. We are currently working very closely with Alphabet to provide a range of options. We've just received some, um, pricing and some potential scenarios. Really, Alphabet is waiting for us, uh, to have a more, a solid understanding of what our needs are. The proposed plan is contractual, so there are some things, but we are exploring the options of discounts for, um, different families or people who qualify, um, for that under basic need and also our, our Prince County Schools employees, as well as options to do before school, after school and all-day care with educational support as well. Our Alphabet team, um, has surveyed the current participants, um, or current parents, and they are able to be up and ready to do, um, summer camps as needed, um, with a, a hopefully, an anticipated, uh, start date toward the end of July. But Alphabet is willing to partner with us, they are working hard at meeting our needs and we anticipate that we will be able to offer a variety of childcare options for our community and our teachers, but it will be based on the ability for us to staff that and, and the numbers. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you. I'll move on, I'll just yield to somebody else and we'll go around, around again, I guess.
Ms. Wall, thank you, Mr. Wilk?
Thank you, um, and appreciate the visuals and the desk, those were great.
Do you want to look at the playground now?
No, actually, I do have a request, uh, kind of reminds me when I did that research about, uh, protecting transgender kids. If we could eventually get a map and color-code the counties eventually, when we have more clarity on kind of the model that they're doing, that would be great. Someone can have fun with that and I'm sure that'll be a top priority. Dr. Waltz is like, no. Okay, this round of questions has to do with kind of health of student staff, uh, in the, uh, in the, in the possibility that there was some type of quarantine needed. Do we have a general policy? And this comes from actually discussions with principals at all different levels, seemed like this was a common theme. Do we have any type of policy, are we developing policy at this point, uh, for what happens if we have to quarantine students and staff after someone may be in that classroom test positive, whether it be the teacher, um, or a student in the classroom?
So the answer is yes, that is all laid out in the CDC guidance and again, um, through the state VDOE. And if, if you just go to that link, that document is readily available and it's, uh, there's an index, so you can, you can see how that has to be handled.
Okay, so maybe we'll just.
Specifically spoken to tonight, because I can call on Ms. Heebner.
I, I'm sorry, what, Dr. Waltz?
I said, if you'd like more of the specifics tonight, I can ask Ms. Heebner to share.
No, for time, if, as long as we have a plan and maybe if someone, we can put that on, on an FAQ or something, that would be helpful for the citizens to be able to find that kind of quickly. So that's good, thank you, Dr. And that follow-up question, maybe this document also has that. If a teacher is quarantined, are they, are they required to use their sick days or sick bank while they're out? Or would that be something covered by, I guess, our own policy for protecting them? Oh, I see, uh, Ms. White is jumping.
Yeah, she'll respond on that.
Gratefully, because of the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, if the teacher is diagnosed, she will get emergency leave, um, right away to quarantine and she will not have to use her own leave at the beginning. Eventually, should someone get a second round of quarantine, we're, we're working on ways to assist our employees with emergency leave, because what's most important to us is that people stay home when they're sick, teachers and students. So if you go to the FAQ, some HR that will be up within the next seventy-two hours, it'll go through every single scenario for you and show you what the leave options are.
That, good, and, and, and maybe, because you mentioned a key caveat, you said if she gets it, but what if a student, Johnny, gets it and she has to be quarantined as a result because of Johnny getting it?
That as well will be covered by those new emergency laws.
Okay, great, so that leads me to my next thing, and it's probably you, Ms. White, as well, um, about subs and about, uh, robbers. And have we surveyed our sub-bank of, uh, about how they feel about possibly having to come in and stuff like that? Their comfort level, do we have, I mean, do we have?
That's a great question, Dr. Eagle and I. That's a great question. Dr. Eagle and I spoke about that yesterday. They're sending out a survey this week, uh, to all of our active subs to see if they're still interested in coming in to in-person learning or if they'd be interested in supporting us with virtual. Certainly our Roppers are eager, they're eager to do their rock work. So I don't think there'll be any issue with virtual learning with our former teachers.
Okay, and the Roppers, uh, given a lot of them are, um, retired, uh, and, uh, and in many cases senior and possibly more susceptible to, uh, the virus, are there going to be positions in mind keeping that kind of in, in, in mind with that?
Yes, absolutely. And in fact, it's interesting. We've been told to be very careful not to assume people over 65 don't want to work, work in person, that we have to give them the option. But we're going to do that and we're going to find other ways where they can work virtually in order to get the rot money that they were dependent on.
Yeah, I just want to make sure they're protected in a sense, just given the vulnerabilities. And then, and then my next, maybe this is not you, Ms. White, or someone. I mean, do we have any positive examples of quarantine that we've had to do as a result of possibly employees, uh, before the outbreak or at that point, anyone in like food service or custodial or something that we've done successfully as kind of a case study in our county?
Great question. I think I'll defer that to Ms. Heebner, who's the health plan. I know that also Mr. Shiroki has dealt with that exact issue, so either one of them should be able to address.
Mr. Wilk, uh, we've had cases, uh, this past summer, or actually late spring, with food service as well as with our custodial, uh, a few weeks ago. And the process has been very smooth. The biggest piece is clear communication with the employee about what responsibilities they have and what we can do to help them facilitate, given the federal act. We've had cases where we have had staff that have tested positive, and they have been amongst other people who have, uh, been practicing physical distancing, wearing face coverings. And we've always asked them first to seek the medical consultation of their physician to receive that guidance. But we have had sets of people where they have chosen to do the self-quarantine. Some have done the full 14-day quarantine, others have gone to get tested and have worked with our Health and Benefits Office to follow that process, to get a, a clean bill of health and to be able to return to work. But it, it has worked well, and I think by us being out of school and having isolated cases, at least from support services, has been allow us to work, uh, so that we could continue to clean our schools and provide safe, healthy meals to our kids as we were doing food distribution.
Well, thank you, uh, Mr. Shiroki. Thank you, Ms. White. I'll yield this round and this theme of health.
So I, so I apologize, I, you know, I, I said I'd be watching the hand raising and Ms. Wall has her hand up. I think it's a question related to yours, Mr. Wilk, so hopefully it's not another desk picture. Ms. Wall?
Uh, yeah, sorry. It was, I was just building off of a question that Mr. Wilk was asking about teachers, um, and, you know, staying home if they were sick. And I know in the past, um, I mean, I know my kids have felt this pressure. We've had a policy where if you're absent for two days and you have two days to make it up. If you're absent for one day, you have one day to make up everything you missed that day. And so a lot of our students, especially those students who really care about their grades and, you know, getting everything turned in on time, they feel a lot of pressure to not, to just go to school, even if they're sick. And, and in this situation, I just wondered if we have thought about ways that we can change that message to the students so that they don't feel that pressure, like, oh, I got to go in because, you know, it's my one day this week that I actually get time with my teacher, or it's my, you know, one of my two days. So I need to go in and, you know, take this test. Is there something that, have we, I feel, I feel like that's important for like which method, which, which level of, uh, which plan we choose is what kind of allowances are we going to allow for students to make up work that they might miss due to COVID or symptoms that might be COVID, but they don't know? So they don't go to the school, you know, until they've either get sicker or they get tested?
Sure. So, um, you know, again, having a child who's in high school, I understand how that works. You're, you're absent a day, you have two days to make it up. Sometimes, well, I'll just leave it at that. But yes, um, I'll ask Keith Iman to put that on the list, Deputy, uh, Superintendent, for our next staff meeting, and we will take a look at both the cultural shift in that as, and also an extension of the makeup time.
All right, thanks very much.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Wall. I'm sorry for missing that question. And I'm just joking about the desks. I think that was absolutely important, Mr. Wilk, and I really appreciate it. And Dr. Jackson and Mr. Brewer, thank you.
You're going to hurt some feelings here.
I'm no, no feelings to be hurt. Um, um, those, those were very important, uh, just messing around. Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Dr. Latif. So I am going to ask a desk question. Um, you know, why not? We didn't see anything on high schools, so I know there are several high school students and high school participants who are really curious of what their, um, situation would look like in school model. And I know that there's a lot of different, uh, there's a lot of variety in high school. But if we could get some, um, pictures posted, maybe a typical science classroom or a typical language arts classroom at a high school level, I think our teachers and our students would appreciate that visual. And then I'm just going to jump right in. So Ms. Heebner, um, I'm sorry, unless I missed it in my email, Alphabet did not survey parents, um, about whether or not they're going to utilize services. What they have done is open enrollment, and if they missed it, that's completely my fault. And I don't want to make, you know, I don't want to make it sound like they, they didn't officially. And I just have checked every single one of my Gmails, because that's out of control inbox as well. But I know that open enrollment happened. I know that they already provide discounts for PWCS employees and staff, um, if you utilize their services. But you bring up, um, Alphabet is really important to me because, um, that is a service that I utilize as a parent. And I'm wondering, we, they usually occurs in a space within the school. And if spaces are ready, um, uh, utilized to the maximum ability, how are we going to house students with social distancing and provide daycare for Alphabet? And it's, it's fine if you don't have the answer to that right now, because I understand it's a work in progress. But my issue is that is a number one concern for parents. And I had to sign up for Alphabet in like April. So I'm a little, uh, no, I'm very concerned that, that we don't have more concrete plans from Alphabet, either them providing them to us and we're thinking about it, or maybe we have it and we're just thinking about it and I don't know. And I'm sorry, Ms. Heebner, because I know, I know this is not your favorite hour of the day, and I recognize that, and we're all at different hours. But that's a huge concern for, I mean, because Featherstone was the, one of the last schools in the entire district to get Alphabet. And that was, um, uh, two years ago. So I, I know that that is a major thing, and it's like, you know, we race as parents. I'm on there like my son is buying sneakers, you know, enrollment opens at 12 o'clock, 12:01. I'm at the computer, like, please let me get in. So what are, what, what really are we thinking about for that? And how would that look?
So let me clarify, um, Alphabet will be sending a survey about summer camp, and you're absolutely correct. Enrollment happened back in April, and the summer camp, um, interest is being either today or tomorrow, in the very near future, because we've been talking with them. And so when I referenced the survey, what I meant is for the immediate start of summer camp, because we realized that we did not open enrollment for summer camp based on the, um, fact that we were not opening our buildings, um, for childcare at that time. We are now cleared to open childcare for summer. We're just not sure what the interest level is there, and they are mobilizing their staff to be ready for that. Hopefully that target date, the end of July. Um, I'm very, very confident in the fact of our ability to work and to provide space and, um, accommodate childcare through Alphabet. They have been amazing partners, um, proposing, you know, how they're going to keep kids safe. We have, um, cleansing plans. We've, we've really gone into detail. They really are just waiting to send out information until we determine what our models are. So for example, if we were returning, um, for students for four days a week, there probably would not be the need for the, the model that, that has the four days worth of daycare. But they have really been very flexible. I'm confident that we will be able to get information out soon, and it is definitely in the works. We have literally just received that promotional package yesterday, and we have a plan already to need to finalize those, those details in the very near future.
Thank you. I was a little concerned, because I was like, oh, no, not for the beginning of school. Also ask them, I'm concerned about their ability to staff, just simply because they did not pay their staff like we did. Not to speak bad about Alphabet, because I totally love them. My son's favorite part of the day. We still FaceTime some of his old teachers. Um, that's how the relationship that he developed with them. So I, I know they're fantastic, um, but I'm also concerned about their staffing levels, because I, I know a lot of their, their staff went and got other jobs, um, during this pandemic. So that, that's a concern. I know it's not necessarily anything that we have, uh, responsibility for as a division, but I know that that will impact, um, you know, the childcare needs when they, when they come about. So again, you don't have to answer that now. If I could just get an update on that later, that would be fantastic, just to kind of be able to talk that through with some of the parents, because then I'm sure they have similar concerns. My next issue or question, um, it's sort of both, in, in the, enveloped in one is, so we do a lot of surveying, we do a lot of communications, but, um, I have been out and about, go to the grocery store, had to go to the dentist today, unfortunately. Work with the child wagon on, on Fridays and, and deal with a variety of parents from all, all across the county. One of the consistent messages I, uh, I find is I'll ask parents, hey, did you know, have you seen, what about this survey? Have you seen the latest posting? Nine times out of 10, the answer is no. And I know it is not, I'm not saying this to critique our, our messaging or our communication, because I, I think we do just about everything short of reading it for people at their doorstep. Why I bring this up is it's very concerning, because when we look at the survey results, it's about a third of people. And, and, and when you start pulling, you know, getting more respondents to come in, that picture could really change. And I know from a statisticians, I, I love, um, Dr. Casada, always fabulous presentations, always do a great job of explaining it. And I know you said that we could assume things, but I, I get nervous when we assume, because as we have more information, that may change. Are, what are other ways that we could facilitate pushing out information to parents? Like, could we text parents? I mean, almost everybody has a phone. Could we, you know, use our text alert system and say, here's a survey, check the website? Is that something possible? Because I know we, we really only use that for emergency situations. But if there are any, if parents are anything like me, that email may get drowned out. You know, they're not checking the website frequently, because it's summer. I know in my district alone, some of my schools only had a 30% contact rate for parents. You know, the, the teachers were emailing, teachers were sending letters in the mail, people just sort of vanished. And I'm really concerned for parents who, uh, for families who their child, their high school child or their, their English-speaking child, is the phone number, um, attached to the contact information, and they're not getting that information. So if you get a text on your phone, it comes up in the language that you're using on their phone. Is it possible that when we push out information, we can start utilizing that format? I think that's kind of a Dr. Waltz question. You're on mute, Dr. Waltz.
Thank you. First of all, Dr. Casada, do you want to have anything to speak to that in terms of how we send that out? Or Mr. Gilfoyle might also be good to, uh, address that.
And I was, I was just praising Dr. Casada, because I, I, that's all. Sorry. I didn't, I didn't really need you to respond if you didn't need to.
Okay, how about Mr. Gilfoyle?
So, yeah, so we do have the ability to text parents that have provided us a cell phone number in order to text them. And we do use that, we do use it infrequently, and that's intentional, because, uh, message fatigue. And the whole idea is that we typically save texting for true emergencies, especially in a quote-unquote "normal" year. You know, a, a parent may not look at their texts if, if there's a true emergency at the school, if they're used to getting routine alerts, and so they just ignore it and put it off. So we purposefully kind of hold texts as a higher priority alert system. That being said, for something that is critical, like if we need to ensure that every parent, for example, that we're talking about now, if we need to have every parent go into ParentView and make a selection, or if there is a critical sign-up for daycare, uh, for childcare, we can certainly do that, and we certainly would use that. And we do have the ability to send those texts in all eight languages, and we know who the home language is and which text is tied to which language, and we have done that. So, uh, certainly we will do that and can do that. I just wanted you to understand the rationale behind why we, it's not because there is actually a thought behind why we don't text. And, and again, it's, as you know, just like everybody else, right? We get 10,000 emails, so we purposefully intentionally don't want people to get 10,000 texts, and then they just go like, well, I'm just going to block that text. So that's, that's the rationale behind.
So I think, I think that's a, um, a thank you for that explanation, and, and also thank you, Ms. Williams, for bringing that to our attention. So I would say that, uh, determining whether someone wants to do an all-virtual versus something else, i- if I remember one of our 10,000 conversations, we have a plan in place where, are we not contacting every single family to get that result if we have to? Mr. Gilfoyle, I refresh my memory on that.
So again, once we have a clear understanding about what options we may or may not be providing to families, those would be captured in ParentView, and to, uh, to get people to go into their ParentView account, we would do a significant push, a reminder frequently, uh, through text and through other means, as well as working with our schools, et cetera, to get that information out there. And then we'll work with schools, um, who we know, um, where we know there's families that don't have access even in text. Now, I will say this, because of the push last year to get everyone into ParentView, uh, we do know that we have over 90% of our families have at least an email and a te, and some sort of a cell, cell number. So we can reach a high, a high number. Um, and we do know, working with our schools, who those families are that we may need to have personal outreach to, as well as we can do, uh, sort of the traditional, uh, old-school phone call, uh, if you will. Um, and so we do have the ability to do that as well, and we did do that this spring. For example, when we did the survey of technology devices, um, those were actually phone calls into parents' homes, and, um, the phone would ring incessantly on all your devices, uh, and until you answered it, uh, it would keep calling you. So I know personally, as a parent, I got it four times and it called me four or five times. So, uh, we do have the ability to, uh, to do that, and we will use that for something as important as this, for sure.
Yeah, I, I really appreciate that, because it, it, it ends up being spotty. I know how hard our staff works to reach parents, um, at all levels. But like you got the calls incessantly for the computer, I never got one. Um, and, and I know it's not for lack of trying, it's just sort of the technology and the, and the times. I know as a parent, when I get robocall, I see the number, I know it's a robocall announcement, I don't answer that. And my, the teacher will send me a, a text through a line app, I look at it, I'm like, got it. I don't check my email. So that's a reason why I'm pushing the text, because I think it's a generational issue as well. I think some people are just more accustomed to looking at their phone and see a text message, and they're going to respond. Other people will see that phone ring and they're going to pick it up. And, um, I'm just advocating for that, because I think sort of if you have a child in the system, you have your favorite method of communication. I think that because we are in a crisis mode and a crisis time, I, I'm just advocating for using all available resources. And, and just for, also too, because we have a lot of transient parents, so maybe they may not have access to their email where that's, you know, something they normally will get, but now they have a phone and you get the idea. So it's not for lack of effort for anybody within our division trying to reach parents. I just want to make sure that that is clear. I'm just asking for, um, you know, just an additional little support in there, because that's sort of a common language nowadays for a lot of people, um, is text messaging. And I'm just going to ask one more question, and then I'll, I'll move on and let somebody else talk. So I heard when it came to training, um, this word expectation from Ms., uh, I think it was Ms. White or Ms. Heebner, when they were talking about professional development for teachers, um, looking at, um, ACE training and, and, and mental health training and things like that. I, I just want some clarification, because site-based management and professional de, development has, it's not always mandated, it's encouraged or there's an expectation. And I think it, I'm concerned that at this level, at this point in time, that, you know, is it something that we can mandate when it comes to ACE training or looking for mental health, um, uh, issues in our students? And, um, there were a few other up on that slide, but I wasn't sure if that was a mandate or if it was an expectation or what that was. Could we get some clarification, if I could get some clarification on that?
So either Ms. Heebner or Ms. Goss.
So Ms. Williams, the slide that you're referring to is we're not mandated trainings. Those are, um, trainings that we are very actively providing for our schools, and we've had a lot of principals take advantage of that as school-wide staff trainings. The Youth Mental Health First Aid is one that we do have at least one staff member trained in every, um, building, and that we have now trained, um, a series of trained trainers. So we'll be having more people and more people that we are able to use and train, um, in that respect. We can certainly look and examine what types of, um, professional development we can offer during orientations and staff meetings. We do have certain components that we require, uh, at, you know, as part of our staff training, but we can certainly explore those options. But the trainings that were listed on that slide were not mandated, they're highly recommended.
So, uh, uh, just while I have you, because I, I'm, I'm so sorry, Ms. Heebner, I know.
No, don't be sorry. Okay.
My, my, I, I'm really concerned that they're not mandated, and maybe there's trainings that I'm not aware of, because if you are a black and, black and brown student, right now you are experiencing, you've already had your life experience is trauma, um, based upon systemic racism and things you face every single day waking up being black and brown. It, now, on top of that, that is a national conversation that your family is having, you're seeing on the news, you're having to deal with. You know you're going back into a school system, especially if you're an older student, you're dealing with built-in systems. You know, you're going back into a school system, especially if you're an older student, you're dealing with built in systemic racism. You are traumatized every single day. So I, I am concerned that we'll have teachers, because the majority of our staff is not black and brown. That will not be sensitive to that issue because they have not had the proper training, not for lack of caring. And that is a completely different thing. And that is really important to our black and brown students. And I, I'm also concerned about our staff who've had to live with this daily. It, it is a very major issue. I can speak to that myself. I had to take a day off of work, just a mental health day, because I could not get anything done, because it was everywhere. And then I was responsible for talking to my children about it and breaking it down at a teenage level and then at an elementary school level. And, and if we don't have staff that's, has the ability to recognize that off the bat in a minority majority school division. I am very concerned because they're already going to experience the trauma of returning to a non-normal school environment. And we're not, that really, that's a huge flag for me. And what our students will be experiencing. And if there's not the proper things in place, a student could have a breakdown or a student could act aggressively or something like that. And it is the trauma and now we have a discipline problem. And it's not really a discipline issue. So I'd like to see something done for our staff. And that would be teachers, TAs, everybody who supports those students for that awareness and, and that educational component there for them. Because this is a really big deal and it's not going away. So I, I just want to make sure that our staff and our students are supported from that angle as well. And I'm happy to pass the mic, so to say.
And Ms. Williams, I just, I do want to clarify that we do have mandated trainings that do address some of the issues that you're bringing forward. For example, we have bullying training, which we, we can, it is mandated. And we are emphasizing our no place for hate. We currently have 29 schools, our student services team under the leadership of, of the director Rebecca Slater, who has been absolutely amazing throughout this pandemic. And someone I could not have lived without. It has a focus on all the topics and recognizes the need for us to look at that. So we certainly are actively planning for that, embedding that into our lessons, our classroom lessons through our counselors. And we recognize the need for mandated, you know, mandates to encompass some of those aspects for the already mandated trainings that we have. But we certainly can look at that as a team.
Yes, yes, please. I just want to be clear, that is not bullying and it is not just hate. It, it's, it's deeper trauma than that. And that, we have to make sure that we're doing something for those, for, for those people who fall in those categories. As well as the people who don't, so that they can understand the impact of the language that they have and how they act towards those students. It can affect those students. That's a really, you know, it, it's especially, it's important all the time. But it's especially important now because it's another layer of added trauma. I just want to make sure that we're paying attention to that. Thank you.
Lisa Zargarpour.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right, this is sort of the potpourri of questions. First one, are we using trailers?
Yes.
Okay, great. Next question. We had talked about in, in the big presentation, there was a little bit of a talk about cleaning supplies. So proper use of cleaning supplies, I assume we'll have like a procedure. There was some talk about training us, us, I'm sorry. Whoever's going to be using them to, I'm assuming teachers will, will end up having to use them. So there are some classes that some people have been asking about, I want to make sure I don't say something wrong. The CTE classes have things that need to be sanitized in between use. You also have science classes, you have art classes that may have some shared materials. Has there been any thought given to how that's going to be cleaned and who's going to do it? And, and I think parents are going to want to know whether their, their children are going to have, be involved in any of the cleaning at all. Like, I know I had one parent say something about Clorox wipes, they weren't allowed to use them or something. So I, I just want to make sure we're clear on involved in that. So cleaning.
So Ms. Zargarpour, I can answer part of that, but I'll have to defer to our instructional associates about how they might utilize students or the actual equipment that might be used. From a custodial services standpoint, all of our schools will have the appropriate PPE and chemicals provided to the schools. Now, be it some of this instructional programming may require certain chemicals or that won't damage the equipment. And they require other things that the manufacturers would probably specify and the teachers would know best. But I, I do think that, you know, the language that we've received from all of our guidance and training of our custodians, when it looks at instructional stuff has been for teachers. And I know they're doing this, is really to step outside the box and start thinking about how can they minimize contact with things that have to be touched by multiple students? Are there ways to do things virtually versus physically? There still will be opportunities that are needed where they'll have to do hands-on activities. You know, what I have seen is that the use of gloves when students are handling equipment, you know, that minimizes at least the hand touching. It still needs to be cleaned because someone can breathe or, or to talk loudly and drop, let's get on to, to the items. But it is one where some have incorporated using gloves when they handle things, especially if they're utilizing face covering. So I'll defer to, I guess it would be Ms. Goss, knowing that you named a CTE and then science programming to see if there's any further information she can provide to you.
Good evening again. I don't know why I turned my camera off again, but good evening again. So in those instructional programs, we certainly are talking about how we can, you know, limit the sharing of items and, and what can we do to mitigate that? We typically, you know, even in the, the best of circumstances, do not use students to clean, right? So we don't use students to clean cafeterias and we don't use students to clean classrooms. And so that, that wouldn't be necessarily one of our things that we would really be looking at. We're looking at other ways that we can, we can mitigate the use of items. How can we have multiple items so each student can be assigned their own item, right? That you would store. So we are looking at all of those types of, of pieces in, in instructional classes, especially those instructional classes that have hands-on pieces. I, I think that's, you know, when I was talking about that we will happily. Incorporate the work of folks who want to positively contribute to all of the, the fine details and procedures that will need to be put in place for the fall. This is a, this is a great example, right? Of how we're going to continue to need the input of, of teachers and staff to really help put these procedures in place. So yes, we have considered that we're going to need procedures for those classes that have hands-on items. And we've already talked about a number of ways that we can, we can handle it. But you'll be, everyone will get more details as we move through the planning process. Thank you.
Thank you. There were, there were a few emails, the parents were asking if their kids were going to be responsible. So I wanted to make sure I asked that. The other thing, a couple of teachers had talked about online learning and I, and they wanted me to make sure I mentioned this. If you notice when we do these meetings, there's somebody who's handling the technology and saying, and then the person who's presenting who's going next slide. So some teachers wanted to know if there is virtual instruction, especially synchronous virtual instruction. Are there going to be two instructors? Cause you're also potentially talking about maybe some larger classes. So you would have somebody who's handling the, the content side and maybe someone who's handling the student side. So I wonder if there's been given any thought to those kinds of processes. But that was a discussion some teachers had, so I will listen.
Ms. Goss.
Sure. So relative to will we have two teachers for those, if I'm understanding your, your question correctly. You asked if there would be two teachers for a virtual class assigned to those classes. So that is, that's an interesting idea, right? And so we're cer, we would certainly have to look at the staffing at schools. Whether we, we actually would have two teachers to assign to each class, right? In order to do that, that type of work sharing. However, you know, what I will say is that I think there's going to be a number of strategies that we will look to use to streamline the work and share the work, right? Among, amongst team members. I'll just give an example. One of the teachers who's been on the task force was talking about the sharing of work, right? The, the amount of content that needs to be produced. And she was already brainstorming with her team, her grade level teammates about how one teacher is going to record the content for a specific area. And another teacher is going to record all the content. So they, they are already looking at, you know, creative ways on the task force of trying to help teachers really share the workload. And, and some of the, the aspects are what I shared before, which is we're always looking at central office. Although we are small but mighty in many offices. We, we are always looking at ways that we can decrease the workload on, on teachers and classrooms. And so we'll be happy to look at any suggested ideas on, on how to make things work. But some things will come down to staffing and, and unfortunately dollars.
Those dollars again.
Those dollars again.
Last question, recess, any ideas on how it will be handled? That's it, recess and go.
I'll have Ms. Hart answer that question. Jarselin Hart. All right, how about Mr. Erickson? Well, here, here we go.
Hello?
Yes, would you please answer that question?
The question regarding recess?
Yes.
Okay, I'm not sure why my camera isn't, I'm, I'm not sure why my camera is not on. Well, let's see what I can do about it. It won't allow me to, to show, but it's okay. Recession is, is a, is something that we are still in the process of discussing. It will pretty much align with how we space students during the classroom instruction. And for the most part, we have playground equipment and playground space to spread kids out and to ensure that they're wearing their, their facial coverings and practicing social distancing.
Thank you. Oh, I, I did have one thing just to add. I, I did get to see some high school arrangements of seating. And it, again, it depends on the size of the room, but that, one of the questions that came up was we were in a, looked like a chemistry room or a science lab of some sort. And there was a question about if you could put some of the desks, like you could get a couple more in, but they didn't know if they could be in certain areas because of how you might use the, the space. So that was just a, a question that came up while I was hovering, watching us move desks around. All right, now.
Mrs. Zargarpour, I feel really strongly that our teachers in collaboration with our PE teachers can come up with some rotations and activities. In which students can still have the physical movement coupled with social interaction that also protects them from too much physical contact. But I think we have the equipment and resources to make recess a very valuable part of the day. We certainly will need it after being in, in classrooms with facial, facial coverings and spaced six feet apart.
Thank you. There, there were parents who were asking about that and, oh, and some kids, a couple in my neighborhood, so thanks.
We know that recess is the favorite part of the day, next to lunch.
Okay, great. I, I have some questions and they might be short answers. I, I, you know, as a physician, so I spent the first part of my questions on instruction and that was very important. But I want to spend the next set of questions on health and pandemic related stuff. Some of it's already been answered in, in a sense. But I want to remind the public and, and so I'll start these questions. Dr. Waltz, we closed the schools probably earlier than most did. And my understanding is we didn't have any infections that were traced to our school division and outbreaks. Is that correct?
We, we did have, we have had infections of students and staff.
Prior to closure, prior to closure.
That I'm not 100% sure of. I'd have to defer to, to Ms. Polk or Ms. Hugner.
Okay, I mean, from what I recall, I mean, we were getting reports from, from you all about students and staff who were infected. And during the first two to three weeks after the closure, we had very few of those.
Correct.
Right, so, so it might not be zero. So I think, I, I, I think it's important for everyone to know that the decisions that went into deciding when to close, which we decided before the governor really announced the full closure. Were based on good medical advice and science, correct?
Correct.
And, you know, as the country is looking at reopening schools. We are all looking at this thoughtfully and, and as you pointed out earlier, and if you can just reassure us that you've looked at the CDC guidelines. The VDOE guidelines, the World Health Organization guidelines, you're using all the best practices to make these decisions to move in.
That is correct. And again, you know, we, the 25% is what they call the gold standard. But we also explained how you could mitigate some of that by bringing in, by having closure with a social distance, but using face coverings.
And, and you've pointed out that we could do even more and go over and above what some of the recommendations are, such as mandating masks for everybody, all ages.
Yes, the board has the ability to do that.
And when we think about the safety, we're not just talking about our students, we're, we're talking about our staff as well.
Absolutely, because the staff is the backbone of our whole instructional program.
To, to, to my knowledge, and I haven't seen any outbreaks in daycare centers that have been reopened since the, you know, major outbreaks, at least in Virginia. And I think Virginia, we should be very proud of what we've been able to accomplish as far as flattening the curve and, and doing what we did. We were never asked to eradicate the virus, but flattening the curve and, and keeping folks safe, I would say we've done a pretty good job. And, and I think we've done that methodically and thoughtfully and, and, and you're looking at all of these things thoughtfully as we re-enter and reopen, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. And then, you know, from, from, from my standpoint, I, I think it's important to, to remind everyone, the board really cares deeply about this. And, and, and that is why we're looking at this. If the public looks at the documents that have been posted, there are some documents on our, I think there's some documents on safety and how we plan on doing cleaning and things like that in more detail, correct, Dr. Waltz?
That's correct.
Okay.
If we, if we move beyond the, the 25% with the six foot and the gold standard, we will also be doing some other things. For example, if we go to the 50% capacity, Mr. Iman, would you like to speak to at least some additional things we would be doing?
Good evening again, everyone. Yes, and related to that discussion on the 50% model and the 25% model and thanking both Dr. Jackson, Mr. Brewer again for sharing their classroom pictures. They did show clearly with furniture that when, when we move to such models as 50%, we get down to the three foot distance. And of course, we've only recently gotten that new guidance. So with that three foot guidance, it also then would require us to consider additional mitigations. And so those additional mitigate, mitigations that would have to take place would be face masks required. And that obviously for those students who have a medical condition or otherwise, who can't wear a face mask, we'd have to make alternate arrangements in placement for students to be able to do that. So it adds levels that need to be considered as we go forward. That it, it also, in addition to the, wearing the, the face covering, we would also have to be looking at other mitigations in addition to that. So for instance, while we're working to have parents and students self-report their health conditions, we might have to take some more active proactive medical or health checks when students are in school. So when you get away from that gold standard, Dr. Waltz, as you said, then you must put these other mitigation factors into place. And you saw clearly in the diagrams or the pictures, I should say, in classrooms, we get down to three feet versus six, those mitigations have to happen.
Excellent. And then last question, maybe for Mr. Wallingford. Ms. Wallingford, can you remind us of how much money we have saved by not, by removing the cash projects in the budget for next year? Because. Because we anticipated having higher costs this year. And where are and how hard you all are working on securing PPE that we would need once we know what it exactly is? You know, the the, you know, that Department of Labor and VDOE is recommending if we're waiting on those things.
Mr. Wallingford, you're on mute. You're muted.
There we go. I've spent the past four hours listening. So again, Dr. Latif, Dr. Walz, and members of the board. First question, first response is to PPE. There are several groups providing guidance to us on PPE. We're currently waiting for the last set of guidance to come forward, and that's from Dolly, the Department of Labor and Industry. Hopefully, that will come to us within the next week or so. We've already purchased a PPE to supply clinics at the schools. And we have about, I think it's about 45,000 masks that we've already purchased, and we have an inventory. So we're moving forward on PPP PPE, and we should have plenty of that. To the question on money, one of the reasons I pushed so hard on the deferral of those capital projects is because of the uncertainty that we have. We have about $17 million that we've set aside this year that we have setting sitting on the sidelines waiting if we need to use it for a variety of kinds of things related to opening the school division and moving forward into the rest of the year. We also have, as you're aware, we have the general reserve. We have the whole back reserve. And as Dr. Walz mentioned at the very beginning of the presentation, if we need, we also have the option of reprogramming some funds as we did last year to purchase laptops. Thank you.
Okay, great. I have, you know, we'll we'll do one more round with the board, and then I think we have to start thinking about coming to some sort of consensus. If you can ask the questions, hopefully, you know, in a manner, again, to frame your concerns about the the opening, that would be helpful. I'm gonna, you know, we've had Ben Kim on the line, our student member, and I wanted to give the opportunity to Ben ask a couple of questions from a student perspective. Ben, can you go ahead?
Oh, yeah, thanks. I just had like one quick question, really. It's about sports and clubs. A lot of students like were asking me about that. Do you have any statement for like the students about extracurriculars? Thanks.
You're muted, Dr. Walz, sorry.
Yes, I'm back. Good to hear your voice, Ben. So a couple of different things. VHSL is still awaiting decision making around athletics. What the guidance from VDOE has been so far has been basically, you can do certain conditioning kinds of training. You have to have larger than the six feet social distance if you're doing something where the heart rate is even stronger. But we're still awaiting guidance from them on athletics. And then on clubs and that kind of thing, I I remember we have something in one of the documents, but I can't remember if it's phase three. Can you clarify that, Ms. Goss? Thank you.
Absolutely. That's a great question, Ben. And I think a lot of our students are wondering about that. And it's one that we have talked about on on the task force. So we do think it's important for us to have those activities and in athletics when we can. So when we are back in school or if we're back in school in person, those having those activities is going to be important for us to to start. We will handle those on a, you know, case by case basis to make sure that we can follow all the social distancing and the other health requirements. One of the suggestions, though, from the task force is that we not try to kind of do too much too fast, considering all of the changes and all of the new pieces that we will need to have in place for in-person learning. We're planning on if we have those, we will be moving to those towards the end of September, beginning of October is the current recommendation. But we will get activities, after school activities and things in place as soon as as soon as we we can. We understand the importance to all of our students, not just at high schools, but at middle schools and even at elementary schools.
Okay, great. We'll go to Ms. Jackson.
Thank you. I'm trying to wrap up my questions to try to determine the differences between 25 and 50%. If I could get some clarification on the sanitizing requirements for teachers between the two, as to echo Ms. Jessie's concerns, I'm wondering how teachers are going to sanitize their desk and monitor the hallways and how that looks different between the two plans.
Do one of the level associates want to respond? I know you've been working with principals on these kinds of issues.
Sorry, Dr. Walz, members of the board. We're working on that now. We're gonna, in regards to the different schedules and and where things land and the cleaning and so forth, one of the one of the models we're looking at is having a a day between two days with one group of kids and then and then Wednesday and then two more days. So that will give us a chance to clean in between. The custodial staff is going to be ready during the day. I know you're asking about specifics in regards to teachers and and requirements for them. And I know we'll have them prepared, but I, you know, and we'll be working with the principals on on those types of things.
So a follow up for middle school or high school? Because I'm concerned about the transitioning from one class to another.
Mr. Bixby?
Dr. Walz, it would come down to.
Sorry, go ahead, Bill.
Dr. Walz, it would, members of the board, Dr. Latif, it would come down to what the plan is. It's it's possible if we went with 25%, we would leave both sets of desks in the classroom and mark some as the A desks or B desks or one desks and two desks and have the kids who come in the second period sit at a different set of desks so that the first set would not immediately need to be cleaned. It's really going to come down to us working what the board's decision is and how we can come sanitize those desks at the classroom level.
Ms. Ms. Jackson, the same would be true at high school. We're also going to try to make sure that we try to minimize as best we can the number of transitions, because if we're at the 50% model at Battlefield High School or Patriot, that's still 1,400 kids in a hallway at a time. So we can stagger the start times perhaps so that only half the students would be going at this minute and the other half would be going at another one. We've been discussing that today, but trying to minimize that as best as possible. And then coming back and working with sanitizing the desk would be something we're trying to do.
And Mr. Shiroki, again, we talked about a number of these things that are meeting today, but would you just, again, very quickly review the the fact that you made it clear that we would be doing the major cleaning? How that would work?
Yeah, during the day, our custodians, their focus is going to be on all the the large public areas, the the office, the health and PE areas, libraries, areas that are used commonly, front doors, doors in corridors. During the day, they will get into certain classrooms as available. But that at the end of the day, what we have trained our custodians to do is to conduct a thorough disinfecting using our spray apparatus to be able to clean and disinfect those rooms. Now, the comment that I'll make is with regard to the teachers during the day, you know, and I purposely said that, you know, our expectation is that it's all hands on deck, but it's cleaning as frequently as possible. And we know that there will be limitations, and there'll be times where teachers will be able to clean in between classes. And, you know, again, I'm a realist. There'll be times where they're not able to clean, or they may have to finish up as the kids are in the room cleaning certain areas. But again, it's a team effort in all respects. And our custodial teams are going to do everything they can to do a holistic cleaning each and every day in all of our primary instructional and public spaces.
Thank you.
Shiroki, just one second. Ms. Williams has a related question just on that topic.
Yeah, it's 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 on cleaning, and it follows Ms. Jackson's line. So I'm concerned because it says in person, there's a 10-minute class change, and that teacher should be wiping down desks. And I know you said that that's if possible. But what type of cleaning supplier are they going? Well, first off, I think that's kind of hard because it's 10 minutes. And if you even have 10 or 11 desks, that's, you know, they're gonna have to wipe down the desk and then prepare, usher the students out, wipe down a desk, and then usher in new students. And then what cleaning are they, what 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 product are they using that's going to dry enough time to be effective, to be even worth the effort of cleaning? Because I'm getting questions about, you know, what what would be a safe cleaning product? And then why we're asking teachers to do that in such a short period of time? Or why we're asking teachers to do that period in addition to all of their other responsibilities? Thanks for letting me jump in.
There's two primary types of products that we would be using in our schools, and both are the same product. And it's it's a product called Oxifer. You've probably heard that on occasion. It's a it's a name, but it's a disinfectant that is approved by the Center for Disease Control, as there are a multitude of products that are out there. We would be providing sprayers, bottles and towels and gloves in all of our classrooms so they're accessible for anyone to use. The the effectiveness of a product has to do with its dwell time or or its kill time. How long does that wet chemical stay upon a surface? To be most effective, the product that we use is five minutes. Now, be it five minutes is not realistic to sit and dwell in between class changes, but still cleaning, you know. All of the training that I have had from hand washing to cleaning, friction is very important. It's the wiping of a surface, and we purposely are using paper towels because wiping removes dirt, removes germs, just like when you wash your hands. The reason you wash your hands for 20 seconds is that it's not the soap, it's the vigorous movement of your hands in the running water that causes germs to come off. And then using paper towels, you're physically wiping the surface of your skin to clean, to wipe those germs. So I still believe that wiping in between classes is effective. It's not 100%, but again, I I say it. We cannot clean enough to keep surfaces that are touched by multiple people clean as we're trying to address this pandemic. But again, I I don't see it as being something that's going to happen every single class period. It's not realistic. They'll have to do that potentially at times when the kids are still there. They're getting up, there's space, but there's teacher begins to clean off areas that the kids are not at. But it 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 will take time. There's no doubt. But I do have confidence that there are ways in which we could try to do this as much as possible within reason. Again, it's you're asking teachers to do a lot. You're asking all staff to do a lot. But it is something that we all have to do, just like we're doing in our homes on a daily basis when we're when we're cleaning, especially when we go out, have to go out to the store and we come back.
Thank you. I think this all touches on the importance of teacher participation in this process and in increasing it. And and I appreciate the PWA survey and the the school system survey. Because I'm a data person, and I look at all the surveys. I I am curious to see how the schools are going to collect and disseminate COVID-related data so that we can analyze as we choose a plan if it's working and will we make this data transparent for parents?
Ms. Heedner, I know that through our the health plan, there are certain collection points of information. Can you speak to that?
Yes, I can. I can't tell you exactly how it is going to look, but we will be collecting that through our our school nurses will be monitoring absenteeism, and our Office of Benefits and Human Resources will be collecting that. We'll be working with the Office of Accountability and our IT system, the hub. Prior to the closure, we were already collecting absenteeism rates and looking at them in several different ways. And we all know how Dr. Qussad is about data. She's going to provide us with some really great ways that we can look at this to ensure that we're monitoring transmission and keeping our kids safe. As far as the posting of the data, I can't speak to that. That's something I would have to get back to you on. I want to be sure that I'm not oversharing. It would be definitely a process and a privacy concern. But we will, we always always communicate and keep our communities aware of any transmission or any concerns within the building to keep our kids safe.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Jessie? Ms. Jessie? Okay.
I just said I'm not, I'm a little bit common now, guys, so I'm good. Couple of questions. The they're health related, so I'm not sure if the nurse or someone from the nursing would answer this question. And looking at other plans, some there are, when visitors to the building, will visitors to the building have to wear a mask? Will they be required to them to wear a mask? Or will we provide masks for them? Did you hear that question?
Yes, our recommendation, as we've developed our health plan, is to limit visitors to the building. And we would be expecting anyone 10 years of older to be required to wear a mask when in the building and maintain the six-foot distancing.
And and some plans before teachers enter the building or they're having COVID testing, are we looking at that? Are we just looking at some of the he- health screening process that you have in place?
I can speak to the daily health screening. We are implementing a daily health questionnaire, a self-check, and helping people understand the symptoms and and before they report to work. The testee would be a question that defaults to Human Resources about a return to work. So I can let Ms. White speak to that.
Not to return? Yeah, will will we, will they just enter the building? And and in some instances, some counties or some school systems have worked with the county, and they provided the COVID testing for school system.
You know, at this time, we have no plans to actually perform the testing. But when you sign your daily self-check, when if there is, if you have been exposed or you do have it, you, that goes through the Office of Benefits. And benefits will contact that person, number one, so we know where that person has been and then to advise them on any leave options and anything they need to present before return to work.
Okay, so if what happens if the person doesn't bring their form or fill out the health form? Will they not be allowed to come to work or how that work?
I think if it's been more than two weeks, because two weeks is the leave you get immediately for testing positive beyond the two weeks with no symptoms. My first thought is they might be allowed to return to work, but I will check on that, Mrs. Jessie, to make sure I'm correct.
Oh, I'm sorry. I think I misspoke. I what I was asking, the daily form or the form that you, I think there's some form that they have to fill in?
Yes.
If if the person shows up and does not fill out the form?
Oh, I see what you're saying. When they, everyone before they return to work next year has to fill out the form, and they have to have certain training before they fill out the form, some of the things we've been talking about tonight. And then either through Cronos or through going on your computer, starting work, you will get a reminder. So everyone who either checks in with the Cronos system or use our uses our system will be constantly reminded of that requirement.
And if they don't respond, they will not be allowed?
If they don't fill it in, we have a new record system. So we will know everyone, that everyone who comes to work has completed the correct paperwork and training.
Okay. The other question I have, I guess, is for the health professionals. If a person. If a person, it's almost as if there's a conflict between HIPAA and the virus. If a person is positive in a school and we, for privacy, we wouldn't, would we not tell anyone? But for tracing, wouldn't we have to alert other individuals that a person has tested positive?
So we do have two different requirements based on students and staff. And at all times, we try to protect the privacy of the individuals, but we do have a duty to notify those who are in a direct path. Our nurses and our health staff will be receiving additional guidance and training on what we would consider to be contact tracing. All official contact tracing will be done in partnership with Prince William Health District and we follow their lead on that. But you're exactly right, that we do have a duty to notify those who are in immediate exposure over 15 minutes of close contact, you know, beyond the six feet of, of distancing and without mitigation strategies. We have a duty to notify and we do that in a confidential manner, depending on, on the need to know. It, it can be a very broad communication, but it can also be a very narrow to only be people that were in contact with that particular person. But we will work with the health district and our nurses will be trained in contact tracing as well.
Yeah, so and if you're a teacher in a classroom and you have the virus and you're, you've got to, you have to go into quarantine all those students, would those students be notified?
We, as, as we have been doing, yes, we, we definitely will be alerting the parents in the community. We have already utilized the practice of sending letters home containing as much specific information as we can to help parents assess the risk and to encourage them to work with their healthcare professionals without over disclosing and, you know, not in violation of any HIPAA privacy.
Okay. And my final question, I'm not sure if Jennifer can answer this. I noticed that there were choices A and PM. And I'm wondering, as Jennifer Rose is talking about full day, five days a week, have we looked at, because the survey happened later before we had actually planned other, designed other plans? Have we looked at the old morning afternoon plan? Have we looked at that as a viable plan where you would have a designated language arts block? You would have a designated math block as required? And you would integrate social studies and science? If we look down the road, have we thought about a half day schedule where at least parents would have five days and kids would be in school?
Mrs. Jessie, I can just speak to what, the reason that question was on the survey and it was because it was in the phase guidance from the state as possible scenarios to get comfort. It was before it was developed concurrently with the work that was going on with task forces and stuff. That's why it was on there. Again, everything was moving and evolving very quickly. I can't speak to considerations of what, what was happening before our plans were developed.
Okay, but I'm quite, my question is, should we look at the possibility? And that would not be something you would have to ask to Jennifer, but at a half day morning afternoon classes, where you would have a small number of students in the morning, small, a different group of students in the afternoon, pretty much like we did when I first came to the county. We had, I know Dr. Walt's your favorite, morning and afternoon kindergarten, but could we have morning and afternoon classes?
We considered that, but the problem is the, with the social distancing, the way the bus routing works, and also it would compound the cleaning issues because you'd have two completely different sets of kids in there within the same school day.
Would it, would it impact in a positive way the lunch schedule and the need to provide hot lunches for students? And I, I'm just asking you to think about some, if we could maybe look at the possibilities and down the road as we look at other avenues.
I want Mr. Shiroki, if you have anything to add.
Yeah, there's no doubt that the lunch comment, Mrs. Jessie, that would help if you were able. And I think someone suggested it earlier, but if you were able to give kids lunches as they were leaving and then another group is coming in. But early in, in the very beginning stages of Mrs. Goss's Return to Learning Task Force, the transportation is what prevented us or precluded us from being able to do the half day schedule because of the, we have several midday runs with our, our Head Start, our preschool programs, our special education, our specialty center runs. The fact that we provide transportation across the county for children, it just doesn't allow us to, to break the, the schedule into two half days. I really believe if we did not have a specialty center program for our high schools, it would be something that we could focus on, but we just wouldn't be able to get the drivers to get the kids back and forth from a logistical standpoint. So we, we moved past that very quickly. Whereas I have seen a lot of school divisions where they have one or two high schools within their entire division, and they have been able to do that because they don't have specialty centers and CTE programs where kids are moving in between many schools.
Will you have to add more bus drivers with our plans that we have in place? What are you looking at? Are you going to have to add more bus drivers?
We're currently working on a model and, and I think we are there. You know, the hiring of bus drivers has always been a challenge, especially in economic times. And some would say that now more people need jobs and, and that, you know, time will tell if we're able to continue to recruit back at the levels we did several years ago. But we are designing a, a plan where we're not asking for additional drivers because we know that we may not be able to, to meet that goal and being able to obtain them and train them when it takes six to eight weeks to train drivers to get their CDL. We will, we do anticipate that there will be drivers that will be working the full length of their contract as well as working possibly a half hour to an hour as needed to be able to get these runs done so that children can get to and from school.
At one point, Dr. Wells, I'm not sure, we used, seemed like we used aides or some classified personnel for dual responsibilities or dual job responsibility. Didn't we do that at one point?
I'm not sure, but we, we have had situations where we've had to reassign, you know, like under other duties as required.
Cafeteria, it seemed like, and when I was a principal, it seemed like there were cafeteria workers who also drove buses depending on the schedule.
Well, we did have a recruiting program and that's still in place where we have a few teachers actually who drive a run before and after school and, and that's in place now. We didn't have a lot, but, but every run, every time we get one person trained that can do a run to and from, it's a help.
Yeah, thank you, I'm done.
Thank you, Ms. Ralston.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. My question is, this year was the first year that graduation was different. Have you started working on these upcoming seasons? You know, I, I just want to know because it was interesting that kids that graduated, I like the way they put everything out there for, for the children. So have we started to look at it? Probably not, because we're awfully early.
Ms. Ralston, we started doing, preparing for the 21 graduation around December of last year. When you approve the budget, when you approve the calendar early, as this board does, you do us a great favor in preparing for graduation window. So we've already started to do that. We're hoping we can go back to the traditional graduation, the one that we all.
Yes.
But if, if the conditions at the time don't allow that, then we certainly have the experience of what we did this year and what we can do to make our students feel, or to celebrate them the way they ought to be celebrated. So we have already started the process for graduation.
Very good then. Well, see, I didn't know that one. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Ralston. Ms. Wall?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Latif, I have a question. I have a kind of a couple of questions about Canvas, but I'm going to start out with a different question. My first question is, this has come to me through, through some constituents, but will SAC still be available for the community? I don't know if we've talked about that as, as an option or, I'm assuming it will still be available, but follow the same general rules of social distancing? I think Dr. Delitif, or Dr. Walt, you're on.
Yes, yes, we did talk about that earlier, that our provider is Alphabet. So we had the Alphabet conversation, that is.
Is also SAC, okay. Excellent, so I have some questions about Canvas. Actually, one, well, first I'll make a comment. I think our schools will like never be cleaner, just with all the talk that we've talked about cleaning and sanitizing, they'll like never be cleaner. So I just want to put that out there. I don't know, it depends on how you feel about immune system development, whether you think that's a good idea or not. But anyway, I had a question about Canvas with the, if we go with the 50% model, then will teachers still be, will teachers be utilizing Canvas in their classrooms as a part of, like as part of their standard development? Because one thing that I really like is what we're doing with Canvas and our modules and building in all these extra supports and really, you know, taking teaching to a higher level and really supporting our teachers. But can you just, first of all, touch base with that or clarify that with me? If we go to the 50% model, will the teachers be using Canvas for both their in-person teaching and structuring of their classes and for the kids who are online?
So I'm going to let Mr. Guilfoyle respond to that.
So I hate to toss the hockey puck on this one, but I will actually ask Ms. Goss as well to weigh in here because student learning is really taking the lead at this point on the, as Ms. Goss talked about in her presentation, the content development piece of this. So I'll, I'll kind of let her fill in that and I'll stay on the line and fill in if I need to.
Well, so Mr. Guilfoyle, before we do that, can you at least explain that that's the platform that goes across both, is my understanding?
Yeah, so maybe you can help me understand your question a little better.
So I'm assuming if we went with just 100% virtual, we would use Canvas.
Right.
Right? And if we go with a, if we go with 50% of the student, of the students going back on any given day, 50% of who are willing to go back. And then we have a kind of an online, maybe what, I don't know, is that going to be 20% of our student population that has to be online for various reasons? I'm assuming they'll use Canvas. But what about the 80% or so who are divided into two groups and are kind of our 50% learners? Will those teachers be utilizing Canvas as well to give cross-curricular? Like what I'm looking for is like consistency across the curriculum for those who are doing online versus in class.
Correct, everyone would be working from the same curriculum. And that's what, that's what Ms. Goss can talk more about in terms of the modules development that she was discussing earlier, where she has 160 teachers working on those, that content.
Yeah, that was my, I just wanted to make sure that.
Yeah.
Everybody understood that or that parents listening understood that, you know, that you would get a quality and consistency of education regardless of which model you used. Anyway, yeah.
Yes, correct. And I think again, I'll let Ms. Goss fill in more of that because it's been more her work that she's led. But I just want to make the point, and I know Ms. Goss will make it again, is this is different than what we did this spring. So the spring was, we were in a sort of thrust into an emergency situation. Not to say this falls any less of an emergent situation, but the point being, we are now able to have been able to put a little bit more forethought into it and have more of a consistency of curriculum across, as Ms. Goss talked about, our 700 different course offerings, that the goal is to have that consistency of experience to the degree possible across those different platforms, whether you're in a hybrid model or you're in the all-virtual model. And then as we've already discussed earlier this evening, all the logistics challenges that come from an instructional model predicated on, you know, an all-virtual or a hybrid, you know, I think from an instructional practice, there's been plenty of studies out there, even at the college level prior to any of this COVID situation, that it's incredibly difficult to teach a in-person class while teaching a at-home virtual class. It's, it's almost impossible. And so, because as you know, sitting here this evening, you have to stare into a, into a screen and make sure that you are engaging your audience there. So, you know, it's not preferred instructional practice to have, have to make a teacher have to have a room full of children in front of them and then also have a room full of children at home. I understand the rationale behind why we would want to accommodate that if we can. But I think, so that's, that's, that's the gist of that. But I can turn it over to Ms. Goss who can get into more of the weeds on the specifics on the Canvas modules.
So, so just like Mr. Guilfoyle said, the learning management system does offer us the opportunity for all students who are accessing distance learning to access it through that same learning management system, which also means that, you know, we don't have, we're not asking teachers to create content in multiple platforms or systems, right? So every student assigned to a certain class, whether they're in person and they're doing their distance learning on those days off, they too would be using Canvas to access that recorded content that's been uploaded. The other piece about the, the platform is that teachers can actually use it in the classroom, right? For in-person instruction. We have technology-infused classrooms and they can access the content that they have uploaded to Canvas and utilize that for the students in front of them where it's appropriate, right? So it, it will, it will apply to, to all students, whether we're in the virtual schoolhouse or we're having students who are distance only or those students who are in person and distance. It will be that, that single learning management system for, for any, any model that has students accessing learning in a distance model or a virtual model.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, just, just to reiterate that again, that is why back in January, we proposed this even before COVID, that we wanted to move to this learning management system and to have digital equity with the, with the idea that students need to be having that technology-infused classroom to be prepared with 21st century skills. And so that's why it's so important that we were able to have that digital equity piece put in at, at least for high school. And we know we want to move that down as we were able to get funding. And so we're pleased that this, this fall, we're going to be in a position where high schoolers will be able to have that device that they can take with them, home, bring it to school, take it home, and they'll be able to have it be their device so they can have that consistency of experience in the classroom and at home.
All right, thank you. For those online courses, I know in some of our presentation, and this goes kind of back to like the 50% model, you know, online option, et cetera. But for those courses that a student might take through Virginia High School Learning or whatever that's called, and Virtual Prince William, that's not going to be at any cost to the students, correct? That's going to be covered by the school division if they take an online class through Virtual Virginia or through Virtual Prince William?
So that's, that's correct. So the piece to know about Virtual Virginia, which is exciting, is that we have built a partnership with Virtual Virginia and we're going to be sharing content with them. So one of the ways that we're going to have a lot of modules for courses is that we, we are sharing with them as a part of a partnership with the Virtual Virginia folks and, and a few other school divisions. So our, our teachers will be able to utilize Virtual Virginia courses and, and utilize it for our students.
Okay, great. I have a follow-up question kind of along those exact same lines. You said we have 700 unique courses that we offer in Prince William County. That's a lot. Are we feeling the need to pare that down a little bit or consolidate? Or are we going to be able to meet that expectation to have, you know?
So we, we certainly are working towards meeting, offering all the courses we normally would. If you think about, right, all of the grades that we have in the separate content areas for each one of those grades, right, including encore classes, CTE classes, world language classes, and the list goes on, right? The arts, music, and so on. That's how we get to that number of courses in our school division. But our goal is to, to maintain the level of, of courses and, and we believe that we can. We certainly are going to need to pace that. You know, we do not have, we've heard several times tonight, we don't have unlimited dollars. So that's why I said earlier, as we're creating those common course modules, where our goal is to do it and be at least a quarter right in advance of the pacing. So, so everything won't happen this summer, right? It can't happen. We don't have the amount of personnel. We need to build that many course modules in that short of time. But our goal is to continue that work throughout the school year. But our goal is to continue that work throughout the school year and ensure that, that we can still offer all of those course offerings to our students. I think that's one of the things that makes us a really strong school division is all the options that we offer our students based on interest and, and strengths and, and part of our, our program.
Great. I have one more question, if that's okay, Dr. Latif. Um, okay, so one of the things that I'm personally thinking about is if we go with the 50% in-class model, my understanding is that Canvas allows us to take that risk and get that as many kids in the school as possible with a fallback that if we needed to go, like suddenly if we had to shut the division down or something like that, we would be able to seamlessly move into an online, online environment, correct? And I think, I, I think it's important to understand that like the goal would be to get as many kids in class as possible, but the Canvas's advantage is that it allows us that flexibility. So if we had a school that had to shut down because of the whole school had a COVID problem, you could just move everybody into an online environment. Am I correct in understanding that Canvas would allow us to do something like that, that give us that kind of flexibility?
So, so Canvas absolutely does. I think what I referred to in, in my presentation was agility, right? That agility to adapt quickly to changing circumstances. And, and that could be a closure, right, for any number of reasons, including the pandemic. And so that is one of the positives of having this type of learning management system. And it allows us to, to toggle and move quickly and maintain new learning for our students. So it is, and I'm, I, I believe you, you said something about risk before, so I just want to make sure I answered everything correctly.
I think, yeah, I think that, that sounds, I think you did. Thank you very much. I, I mean, I know we have a lot of students who will need technology support. And I know that I've read the plan and it talks a lot about how students, teachers and parents will be trained on Canvas so that parents can provide the support for their children. And frankly, the kids are going to be fine. It's the parents probably need the most support. But I think if we, I think, I, I'm excited about the possibility that Canvas allows for our school division to move forward in this time of pandemic, but also just kind of raise the level of equity, equitable instruction and high-quality instruction as well. So thank you for your
Absolutely.
comment.
Mr. Wilk?
I've been trying to color my map, but since I've been off, Culpepper, Stafford, Warren, Clark, Frederick, Winchester City, Rockingham, Harrisonburg City. Is it Staunton or Stanton? I know they pronounce it differently now. Yeah. Augusta, Wayne, oh yeah, are all blended, virtual and in-person, just like what we're looking at. And Orange County is primarily virtual. So just wanted to add that in there. So some of my questions, and I think some of these have been addressed, but this last round of questions goes towards more teacher health and concerns. We've kind of already talked about the supplies and support and the PPE resources we'd be providing teachers. Does that include like wipes, hand sanitizer, potentially any mask and stuff like that? Would that be included in the classroom for a teacher or would that come out of the teacher's pockets? Can anyone hear me?
Well, I'll start off, but I need other assistance with this. Well, I'll start off by, we're asking people to provide their own masks. If they're unable to do so, they will be provided at the school. The school can order through the central supply and we'll have those things in stock as we mentioned earlier. Mr. Shiroki, do you want to, again, I think I know the answer, but I'd rather have you answer about the hand sanitizer and the wipes.
Yeah, all, all of the, the PPE and the cleaning materials that are necessary, schools could purchase that and access it through the supply warehouse. So yes, there is an expectation that all schools will be having all, they'll have access to all those materials so that they can have them at all times, not just in classrooms, but in all, all spaces where people congregate so that it's readily accessible and available so they can be used and someone's not having to walk down the hall to get a product.
So let me just clarify. So it's incumbent on the principal to use their funding within their building to decide how much they want to purchase that? It's a, it's a site, it's a site-based decision in some sense?
We're, well, it is. You know, they have funds that they are provided. And obviously, I think it's been mentioned that the schools, we will be tracking their expenditures. But yeah, they, they already order their custodial supplies and they're going to use the same format that they've used. And we provided the schools as well as the custodial teams, the guidance on what the expectations are in order for them to, to be fully stocked and to be ready to, to clean as needed.
Okay, no, I appreciate that. Couple other follow-up, if we were to go with the 50, thank you, Mr. Sarchi. If we were to go with the 50% plan, it does mention that students of, parents, students whose parents are teachers potentially would go four days a week or would potentially be included for four days to help support the teacher in that school. Would that also include our other employees? Like if mom or dad were like a cafeteria manager or a custodian and stuff like that? If they were employees in their school, would those kids be included in that four-day policy as well? Or would that just be exclusively for teachers?
Who would like to respond to that?
I, I believe when we discussed the possibility of making sure we were giving teachers every opportunity to come back and teach for the kids who would be there, it was for teachers, students between kindergarten, kindergarten and 11 years old. Because after 11, you can be home for greater periods of time than under. So it was, it was for teachers.
Would it be possible if there's a rare circumstance, if, if it is 11 or kindergarten to an 11-year-old, if the dad or mom or cafeteria manager or something like, I mean, I mean, those are, those are essential employees, I would say in my mind as well.
Right. And we're exploring other options such as alphabet and other areas to address that as well. But it all depends on the number of people we can have per class. So that wasn't a, that was something we proffered and we're thinking about and we could seriously consider. But again, it comes to the numbers who will act, number of students who will actually be in the classroom.
Okay, no, thank you, Ms. White. Following with that, if we go to a 50% model, which in most cases, as you mentioned, Dr. Waltz, less than rare circumstances where there's smaller rooms because more kids opt out for virtual and stuff, would we have to adjust our code of behavior to mandate the usage of mask? So there could be disciplinary action or removal of class of students who refuse to wear a mask in class? Would that, would that necessitate, would that necessitate, I can't even talk right now, would that require that?
Well, it's certainly something we would have to look at before school starts.
Okay. With the, two more questions, sorry, Dr. Latif, going along these lines with the teachers. With the changes potentially and the nature of just where we're at with the pandemic and reopening of schools, will there, let me put it this way, well, dear, in my experience with some of the issues with discipline, will there be more of a strict enforcement of discipline policies when it comes to potentially insubordination, horseplaying, fooling around in class? When it comes to student behavior during this type of crisis and exposure risk?
I mean, we would certainly expect the, you know, the teachers to go through the ground rules and reteach if some kid didn't understand something that they were supposed to do. But it would be important that certainly the things over social distancing were enforced.
Okay, I appreciate that. And last thing, and this might be a Ms. White question with your guidelines, Ms. White, of your Q and A. If I'm a teacher and although I do not have, I do not have potentially any type of pre-conditions for potentially putting me at high risk for COVID, but my spouse does, or vice versa, the teacher or whatever, back and forth, either scenario, is there a potential opportunity for them to try to apply for, to be virtual if we go for the 50% model or how does that work?
I think if the numbers work for us, yes. Right now, just having someone of a certain age or was a certain comorbidity wouldn't be enough to say I have to have this accommodation, but we want it to work for everyone. So depending on where we land and knowing the numbers, we will hope that preference will be able to be taken into consideration as well.
Okay, so wait, it's kind of like a, almost a Fairfax County model in that sense that once teachers select and if we're at a point where we have too many virtual, we have to go through and kind of look at, yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay, I think those are my questions. Dr. Latif, thank you.
Ms. Williams?
Thank you. So I'm going to start off by saying that I, I, I'm heavily advocating for a second session and not just as, as when we vote. Maybe it's after we take a vote, maybe it's before. It's getting late. Everyone gets tired around this time of night. But the reason why I say that is because we're flooded with a lot of constituent questions and staff and teacher questions. And I think it's important that we respect that and give them the time that they need when we're all able to be focused and clear-minded as well. That's something that's come up before in budget sessions, so I just kind of want to throw that out there. I, I also got a couple of questions from some students who want to know why they're not included in this discussion in a more meaningful way. So I know that a lot of the decision on whether you return to school is going to be a parent-based decision. But I think we've spent a lot of time, I know I have Ms. Jessias and, and staff in the past several years encouraging students to be more active and participate in their educational experience. So I'm, I'm just wondering if maybe Mr. Kim or someone else, you know, another student representative would undertake the task of surveying students to find out what their questions or concerns are? I hate to put that burden on staff. Maybe somebody can work with Mr. Kim or student representative. But I think that that's a missing component from this conversation too. And, and we've been doing a really good job about respecting student voices, so I just want to make sure that they're heard. I have some, some more concerns when it comes to our site-based management and, and handling, you know, the, the PPE and the, the cleaning disinfectant. I think there's just a general concern of what else schools won't be spending money on or we may need to spend money on if they're going to spend money on sanitation, PPE, that type of stuff. I don't need an answer for that right now, but I, I would like to, to get some more updates on that as we go along because we know historically that different schools get different funding based upon their student needs. And so that's a concern. But I know that there also has to be from procurement side, a way to track that spending. And, and I understand that that's probably the best way to do that in the system that we have. But I just want to make sure that some of our students aren't missing out on something because maybe that school has a high PPE need or a high sanitation need that another building doesn't have. So if we could get update on that later, how that plans to work a little bit more detail, I greatly appreciate it. And then the other thing that I'm curious about is, so we, we spent a lot of time talking about elementary and middle school, but we haven't really spent a lot of time talking about what high school's going to look like. I'm concerned when it comes to getting lunch lines and, you know, like Mr. Mulgrew said, you know, you could have up to 1,000 students at class change at one time and how that fits in with CDC guidelines and limiting the amount of people coming into contact with each other. If in a typical class, class change, there's 500 students walking around the building. I mean, I know they're going to be monitored and maybe it's one directional flow, but that's a lot of kids, especially at lunchtime or that's just a lot of kids at one time. So I'm really concerned about that level of interaction with our students and staff for that many people during a 10-minute or a five-minute break. And I have some teenagers and, you know, they're really, they're, I love them, but they can be very interesting in the hallway, just like elementary schoolers. So I, I have some concerns with that as well. Because can anybody speak to like how we are going to manage the number of students out and about? And where we're going to put them if they have to be six-foot distancing for lunching and, and that kind of nature at a high school level?
Well, one thing that we did discuss was we could have one-way hallway. That does mitigate. We might let English and, and social studies leave at 10:28 and then have them get to their classes. And then have the other class leave at 10:33, the math and science leave at 10:33. So you're decreasing by half, again, the number of students in the hallway during the class changes. You would just, you stagger them, so to speak. But we are looking right now, and we even discussed it this morning when I zoomed at the principals about all the ways that we could mitigate and try to make sure that we can take care of the cafeteria and the class changes. Those are the two areas that we discussed very thoroughly this morning. One-way hallways is, is a, we've used them before in many buildings when they get overcrowded. We've used one-way hallways. So students would come out of their building and they take a right. And it keeps them all moving so they're not bumping into each other as they're walking through the hallways.
Yeah, I was just
That's one way you can mitigate.
I was concerned because I, I know, having been in the high school, like I get lost because I'm so little by comparison because they're all, they as well, right? So I, I just want to make sure that, we hadn't talked about it. I'm not to say that we didn't think about it, but we just hadn't really discussed it because the focus has been primarily this evening on middle and, and elementary school students. And Mr. Shiroki, did you have something to add? You came back on for that.
No, Mr. Mulgrew answered it perfectly because it is about staggering and about geographic movement of not bringing everybody from one corridor at one time. And those are the, the creative ways I know that are all to manage all navigation during the day, not just at lunch.
Okay, and I'm going to try to keep this short because I know it's getting late. So I'd like a, a little bit more update. Again, I'm just going to hammer on alphabet. Like when we get closer to our, our decision about, or we make a decision about how many students we're going to have in the building, I'm just concerned about the spacing and, and what principals are being asked to do to how to accommodate all that. I know that we don't have that answer now because we haven't decided how many people we're going to, whether we're going to go 25, 35 or 50%. But an update on that afterwards would be great. And then my last question is code of behavior related. So what changes or what are we going to be doing in relation to code of behavior when it comes to our virtual students? We just have not discussed that. And I'm really curious to know, are we, you know, how are we going to update? Or do we have updateers then in the work for our students who will not be returning to classroom but are expected to adhere to code of behavior in a virtual environment?
So Ms. Williams, one of the things, one of the great things that we have going is our Director of Osment participates on a state focus committee. And she has recently received information that the state will be providing us with additional guidance, taking a look at our code of behavior and how to update that. We were thoughtful when we crafted the code of behavior. Really, the whole idea behind discipline and the code of behavior is really a disruption to the educational environment. We did add and strengthen some of the language in there to talk about like accepted use policy and the use of video, different things that would apply to a virtual environment. So really, the code of behavior as it stands can be applied to any what we call, quote, classroom environment. But we acknowledge the fact that we will want to look at what language and what the state will be supporting through their model guidance and the directions that they'll be giving us in order to address specifically the virtual environment because it is new to us. So we are hoping to get that information. July 15th was the deadline for the input. So we'll be getting that back hopefully in the near future. There's a lot of information that's, that's to be delivered in the near future.
I, I appreciate that. I just asked a question because I think it's helpful sometimes for people to know that we're, we're thinking about it or to impress. I'm sorry, I lied. I have one more question. So we have this really outstanding, fantastic school in our division, Independence Non-Traditional, that has used like a four shift model for several years and their graduation rate has increased and they do some fantastic things there. Are, is there, did we give thought to their, I don't want to say do we give that. Well, I'm asking this because I know we did because one of their staff members was on the pandemic team, one of the assistant principals. But I'm, I'm wondering why we didn't look or how we utilize what they're doing so successfully with their awesome and amazing staff out there as to how we developed our plans now, looking at the modeling for our students? And if we were able to take any best practices from what they've been doing for years and years and sort of fold that into the mix now? Because it's no secret, I'm a huge fan, but they've had such a great success with their students and continuing learning. And, and they have like a, sort of a hybrid program already where they have students in the building, but they also have like a online component. I'm wondering if we were able to utilize some of the amazing things that they're doing and some, and helping to develop some of these plans.
Ms. Williams, one of the items that was in consideration, and there may be others who could contribute, but it boils down to even what I was discussing with Ms. Jessie about the half-days. We put a lot of resources into the transportation model that Independence uses, and it is very successful, but it is labor-intensive and it's very difficult for us as a large division to scale that beyond one to three schools, be it our non-traditional schools. It, it just wasn't feasible from a logistical standpoint. And there may have been some other reasons. And there may have been some other reasons that I wasn't part of on the committee, but that was one where we did do analysis because that model does work and it's very successful. It's just not scalable without a tremendous amount of resources, which realistically, I don't think we would have been able to staff to replicate it for 95 schools.
So I know that Mr. Icorn was on one of the committees. Would someone speak to that?
Oh, no, I know that Mr. Icorn and I think Mr. Bullock was. I just, I wasn't sure like how that would translate over a division as large as we are or if we were utilizing some of their best practices. And I just kind of wanted to, for my own knowledge, but also for the public and the parents and the families that have had such success out there, I'm sure somebody else was thinking about that. And so that's why I posed the question because oftentimes, you know, we ask these questions on behalf of our constituents as well. And of course, any chance I can to highlight one of our many award-winning things, I'm gonna throw that out there, too. So, thank you. I'm done.
Ms. Goss, would you respond, please?
Mr. Icorn was on the task force, and so were two of his assistant principals from INS. So of course, you know, we always look at our non-traditional models, especially in situations like this. But as Mr. Shiroki said, the limitations for us for support services such as transportation to run shifts at all of our schools, that was part of our kind of feasibility, if you will, assessments when we went through these models. And so some models that were not feasible for all of our schools had to be moved off the table, but it certainly doesn't mean that we still can't learn from them. The other piece to note is for INS, they use different resources. So they're using EdMentum and some other, you know, online resources for their students. And you're right, they do an outstanding job supporting students who need non-traditional education. And they have a lot of success with their students, and it is somewhat of a hybrid, right? Students, really that individualized program tailored to each student's needs. But they're on the task force and contributing to the work because they have great ideas on how to meet students' needs in creative ways.
Okay, Ms. Argarpur?
Dr. Latif, if you don't mind, before you go to the next question, I just want to go back to Mr. Wilk's conversation with Mrs. White on collecting data from teachers and their preferences for virtual versus in-classroom teaching. Yes, we're collecting their interest. We want to know that. But the plan we're offering says that we're going to follow the CDC guidance on those that qualify and meet those requirements for those virtual experiences. And that's where we're beginning. I just want to make sure that that's clear, Mr. Wilk.
No, no, thank you, Mr. Iman. And can we, like I said, a lot of Q and A's gonna come out of this and stuff like that. And I know we keep on referencing, people go to this link and stuff like that. If we can make an easy guide of what that means for teachers who qualify, that would be really helpful. I didn't mean to jump forward and assume that we were doing something. I just, that would be helpful, in my opinion. I appreciate it.
Understood. And as Dr. Walt said earlier, FAQs are already under development. We can focus those a little bit better after tonight's meeting with the board. As you know, we've done FAQs throughout this entire process. And so, yes, those are helpful, and that definitely would be one of them. And I know Ms. White is listening to that, so thank you.
I appreciate that, and thank you. And I know we've made a lot of FAQs, and I think those are really helpful, just digesting all this information that we've had tonight from all this, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Argarpur?
All right, gotta tie up some loose ends here. When we were talking about elementary specialists, I've got a couple more questions that came up. I am, I would be remiss to not include library. So are librarians going to be part of a rotation? Are they going to be integrated a different way? That was just a question that came up. The other thing was that if a class is quarantined, specialists are going to be interacting with all the classes. So what are the implications in elementary school for specialists who push into classrooms to do their job, but then could be cross-contaminating? Just, it's a nightmare. Yay, you get to answer that question.
So again, I'll kind of reiterate that, you know, the goal is to make sure that we're always maintaining the best practices and mitigation and the six-foot of social distancing. The goal is to have our teachers stay within a safe distance. And so again, you know, that would be determined by the Health Department. We will not be personally doing and making determinations about contact tracing. That is something that will work with our Health District and follow their advice. And so the exposure that we would look at, we would lean toward our Health District to advise. You know, the CDC and other guidelines talk about the fact of, you know, just because someone is positive doesn't necessarily mean that the people around them are exposed. So we would follow those guidelines evaluating the exposure time, where the mitigation strategy is in place. And clearly, we can't, and again, as hard as we're trying, we are trying to create a very low-risk, stress-free, but low-risk environment because we want our staff and our students to be safe. But we are not able to eliminate all of the risk. And it's important to remember that our health plan is really in place to mitigate as best we can, to reduce as much risk. We will have to look at each situation on a case-by-case basis, so I would hate to make a generalized statement. You know, again, we'll work with teachers and try to ensure safety as we can in that.
Okay, and don't go anywhere.
I'm not going anywhere, okay.
So, and I'm just gonna make it sort of an umbrella statement. That's not really, it deserves its own meeting, actually. But we're getting a lot of, or I know I'm getting a lot of questions about special education. There's all kinds of different classes. So there's kids that need whatever services, and parents are worried about how they're gonna get that. I know that's a whole thing. I don't know if there's anything you can say tonight, but I know people are looking for what can I expect for my child. There's teachers who are asking about what can I expect? I work with children who need diapers changed and things like that. So you've got that whole gamut of different things. I don't know, like I said, I feel like it needs its own meeting. But if there's anything you can say to sort of, like, is there gonna be a frequently asked question, a place that people can kind of go to? Yeah, see, it's your go.
Absolutely. It's our intent to answer every question that we possibly can through a frequently asked question document. There is a lot of information available on Virginia Department of Education and the US Department of Education. You know, the thing with special education, it always comes back to the individualized needs of the child and the specific situation and what the agreement is. We fully intend to include parents in our IEP decisions. We will have to be looking at IEPs to determine which of our students. Some of our students' IEPs may be able to be implemented as-is without a change. But we also recognize that we're gonna have to evaluate where each one of our students is at this point in time. It may not be the same student that was with us when we were back together in March. And so we will have to make thoughtful decisions on a case-by-case basis and create situations that are safe for children. We'll have to offer a variety of opportunities and do what we can. We intend to provide virtual services. We've looked into, you know, the platforms. I know that we have providers, service providers that are parts of associations, and there were some concerns about, you know, can I provide this under what they perceive to be a HIPAA violation or a HIPAA concern? And we have looked into all of those, and we are able to provide virtual services on the platforms that we have available effectively without violating any concerns and in support of what their associations will support. We intend to provide as much service, direct service and virtual service as possible. And if not, then we'll have to look to see how we can make up that time.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry. Denise, on that question about the itinerants and specialists, I've had several people say that the itinerants weren't involved in the initial portion. And I keep getting these people who are in contact with lots of different venues, like the special ed people who are going in and out, the itinerant people who are moving back and forth. Is there some way that you could get together with a group of those people to make them feel a little bit more comfortable because they feel they're out of the picture? And they have more, this virus is about having contact with so many people. And these specialists are in and out of all kind of places and buildings. Could you maybe work with some of them in some way to help them feel a little bit more comfortable?
Yes, absolutely. You know, the amazing Dr. Roper and our awesome team in the Office of Special Education will certainly be happy to reach out. We do reach out through our cluster supports. We actually tomorrow have a task force, a group that has already planned to meet. So we're reaching out, working with parents. We'll be folding teachers in to understand how we can help them to celebrate successes that we experienced, you know, during the closure. We recognize that everyone needs to have a voice and to be heard. So we plan to do that as soon as possible. So thank you for bringing that to my attention. Be happy to do that.
And I know you and I have emailed back and forth that there's, so just in case anyone's still awake and watching, special education preschool has, I've had several people reach out, so.
Yes.
Yes.
And I do recognize, you know, Ms. Argarpur, I shared with you, as a former principal of Woodmine Preschool, I recognize that there are unique challenges that go with preschool. A lot of bodily fluids that are involved with that, sometimes some biting, some other things. You know, we have mitigation strategies. We also have protective equipment for when children are biters as well. Or some of the unique things, not just preschoolers. But definitely, we can include, we want to include all of our teachers. Our preschool teachers are important to us. We do have a new supervisor that's over child fine, and I understand that there is some transition in that office. But I want to assure everybody that multiple members from our special education staff in the office and as teachers did participate in the planning and are participating on task force. But we certainly plan to include people as much as we can as we move forward and really celebrate the successes and again, mitigate and try to navigate some of the challenges that we have ahead of us.
Thank you. This will be just the last thing. A parent had made a message and just wants us to make sure we're really cognizant about when we are talking about disinfecting spaces, commonly touched. My brain is dead tonight. Just door handles, things like that, desktops, that this, most products need about 10 minutes of leave it and let it do its job time. So, and you have to use gloves and proper materials to protect yourself. And wanted to also make sure that we were reminded that it could set off, or the concern is that there might be kids who have asthma that might be, could be, it could trigger an asthmatic reaction with some people. But just that, I had a parent who just wanted to make sure that we understood that cleaning and disinfecting is, it's a very, we need to make sure we do it really, really well. And it'll make all of the rest of this stuff that much better. I will, Dr. Latif, you may have your time now.
Thank you, Ms. Argarpur. So I think at this point, we're going on our seventh hour. I think we should wrap this up, and I think that initially, we talked about coming to a consensus to give direction to the superintendent and the staff. You know, as we've learned tonight, that the more information they have on how we move forward, the more information they can obtain to put the plans together. So I think we should do a straw poll. Basically, you know, getting an idea of where the board stands, similar to the way we do it when we do the budget sessions, so that when Dr. Walt knows that five or six or seven of us, you know, like something, then they move in that direction so that when we come back next Wednesday, we finalize a plan. I think, you know, based on what we're doing, and we'll go in reverse order here because I've, you know, I'm just following. I'm looking at my list. I'm a mess. But what I would like to know is what the thoughts are, and we'll vote on the plan up or down, I guess, on the 50% plan with the 100% option for people to do 100% virtual. So you go to school two days a week. The special ed children and vulnerable children will go up to four days for the most vulnerable of those. And that, and we could consider mandating masks to that next week as well if that's the way they feel that they can do this the best way. And then having the option for 100% virtual where I think we've made it clear that the virtual needs to be a bit more synchronous. I think maybe that's shared. So if you favor that plan of going 50% and having the option for students and families to choose not to come in, then just say yes. Seventh hour. Ms. Argarpur? Hello, Ms. Argarpur?
Yeah, it took a second there. Yes.
Yes, okay. Ms. Williams?
With those caveats and further discussion, yes.
Mr. Wilk?
Yes.
Ms. Wall?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston? Diane?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, 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 got it.
Yeah.
Ms. Jessie?
Yes, with the caveat.
Right, and Ms. Jackson?
Yes, but heavy on the caveats.
Okay, so the caveats would be that, you know, Dr. Walt, you come back next week with sort of the, okay, we can do 50%, but we should mandate masks. You know, Fairfax has done that, you know, I think they're looking at it. And I think you've mentioned already today, a number of folks have answered that if we go to that route, we'll have to sort of look at that as a possibility. That would address some of the things that, you know, Ms. Williams and Mr. Wilk says about changing code of behavior kinds of issues. I think as you look at the planning for this, if folks choose the 50% option and you know that, say, 75% of students are coming in live and 25% are saying I'm gonna come in, I'm gonna do virtual, you'll have a better idea of staffing. And so maybe as we come into next week's meetings, we're gonna have more of these answers from you all because you get another week to sort of work on that.
Dr. Latif?
Yeah, yes.
I'm asking him to provide more support services for these people. These are essential workers in a sense, and we're putting people in harm's way, and I think.
Absolutely, Ms. Jessie, and I think you've made that clear a number of times tonight. And I think that, I would also add to the board members, please email Dr. Walt on your further concerns. I know seven hours, you know, there's a lot more folks and a lot more questions. It's our duty to continue to ask those questions of the staff and the administration over the next few days.
I appreciate it.
And Ms. Argarpur, I saw your hand up.
Yeah, I'm worried that I forgot what I was gonna, oh, I know what it was. So with this straw poll, when's the soonest that the division would be getting a survey ready for the staff and the families?
Dr. Walt?
Dr. Casada?
So we're working with HR, if the direction, if this is enough, the HR one can be ready to go pretty soon. Mr. Guilfoyle would need to speak to how quickly it could be put, the parent one, in the hub. But I would imagine today's, well, it's now almost Thursday. I would, you know, I could say we have a draft, you know, by the end of the week. You could have something ready to go.
Thank you.
Ms. White would need to confirm that, too.
Okay.
What's our plan by early next week would be ready to roll? And then the communication piece would be take the next step.
Okay, thank you.
The last thing, and I know, just to give Dr. Walt, I guess, a clear idea about this. I didn't, I didn't hear any objection to starting school for students' return after Labor Day. Does anybody object to that? Okay, so I see no objection to that. So I think, Dr. Walt, you should move forward with that as well.
Okay, just one note of clarification on what it takes to get to the vote. I would suggest that if you have something that is clearly affecting your vote, that you would take it to the staff member that is in charge of that arena. So if it's a question about something, you know, how kids are gonna, I'll just use an example, not to use this one because we are playgrounds. You could go to either any of the three associates. If it's something to do with the health plan, that's Denise Heedner. The instructional plan, Rita Goss. Matt Guilfoyle, and you've got them right on my sheet, the ones who did the presentations. Because otherwise, what's gonna happen is I'm gonna be reading them, then I'm gonna be going back to my people and assigning them. I think it'll just save some time. And if you could please try to limit them to things that actually have to do with your vote. Because we worked, we had last night's several hours. Several of us worked way into yesterday, well, this morning, past midnight, and we worked almost all day today, and this is how it's been going. So if we have to stop the work to turn into answering questions, you know, again, there's some of that that we can do. turn into answering questions, you know, again, there's some of that that we can do. But if you could at least limit it to things that have to do with your decision making, we would really appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. So what I'm going to do is, I'm going to just have the board members, if they would like to make some final comments, and then we will adjourn. I will sort of lead on that, just because I have the mic right now. I want to thank you, Dr. Waltz, your entire staff. This is unprecedented. This is unbelievable, what we're going through and what we have to plan for. I think that if someone made this up, we'd have never bought the novel. It would have been totally pure fiction. That was like fantasy fiction beyond that. So, thank you. You have answered a lot of the questions tonight. There's a lot more. I have nothing more to add, other than instruction and safety are absolutely critical. You know, just from my personal standpoint, as a physician and the school board chair and serving on the Board of Visitors at UVA, education and healthcare have always intersected importantly, but it's never intersected as importantly as it does now. And I want to reassure the public that I care deeply about the safety of our teachers, our students, and the instructional value we're going to deliver this coming year. So thank you all, and thank you all for your patience this evening and being kind enough to get through and hear each other's questions. I'll go to, let's go back to alphabetical, or Ms. Jackson?
Thank you, Dr. Latif. Thank you to the staff. Part of the caveat, I would just add that reaching out to teachers is important. Thank you to everybody who's emailed me. I've read them all, and I will respond. Thank you to the staff today, again, for answering questions and for answering my questions over the next few days. After listening, reading, and reflecting, I realized there isn't really one clear, one right choice. In my district alone, I have people advocating to send students back, and then those who are writing compelling stories and how to, why to approach this with caution. For me, it is imperative to keep students and staff safe, but I also know that education is important, and everybody's student has different needs. I spent 14 years in a classroom, and I just left in June. My days are unlike any other profession, and I'm defined by my ability to teach, advocate, document, and protect my students. I miss my kids, and I know that all the student, all the other teachers also miss their students. Just like every student is different, every teaching position is different, so your input is important and vital. What we need now is a partnership. And while, yes, our school system is responsible, the safety of our students does not just rely on our shoulders. We need to all follow best practices and protocols, wear masks and whatnot. And thank you again for all those who tuned in all the way to midnight. Thank you.
Sorry. Ms. Jessie?
Thank you. You know, I've been in this thing for a long time, and Dr. Latif, you're right. Who would guess that we would have something like this happen? We, when I was out there, I worried about terrorists coming in, and I often told the staff that parents will forgive you for not teaching our children how to read, but they won't forgive you if you don't keep them safe. And at the end of the day, it's all about safety. The first situation we have in this school system in a classroom, if it looks like we did not take what I always refer to as ordinary due care, we're going to be in trouble. We're going to start all over. So I think everyone should keep that in mind. And for every PowerPoint presentation you had, and for every bullet that was on those presentations, I've been at Central, it translates into work at the building level. I would not want to be a principal today, because not only are you talking about a lot of work, but you're talking about putting people in harm's way. It means, you know, I'm self-contained right now, because I have other reasons to be self-contained. But we're forcing, not forcing, but we're requiring people to go out and be in harm's way, in many instances. It's an invisible killer, really. It's a virus that could kill you at any moment, and you don't see it coming. So when we put those teachers out there, we say, you've got to do this, and you've got to watch these kids in the hallway, and keep them in the bathroom. We need to give them the support that we need to. I think the mask, although we ask them to buy masks, it's like a piece of equipment in a classroom, we shouldn't even ask them to buy a mask. We should just give them the supplies that they need. We should give the principals the supplies that they need upfront, so they have it. Because if they choose not to, it's not going to be the principal that's going to be looked at. Dr. Waltz, all of us are going to be looked at and said, why did you not make that what we call a non-negotiable? There are non-negotiable pieces of this whole thing that relate to safety. And in terms of instruction, I've worked with teachers for years, they jump in and they do what's necessary. You'd be surprised what they will do when you pretty much leave them alone, let them do the work. So to all of you, and to people at Central, I know what it's like to do all this work, and I applaud you for all the work. But at the same time, we've got to look at who's going to be actually doing that work out in the field. The work out in the field is going to be the teachers, the aides, the bus drivers. And I applaud all of you for all that you've done. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie. Ms. Ralston? You got to unmute. Thank you.
Yeah. I thank you very much for saying that you would accept this position as the chairman of the school district. And that's a biggie. But it's the thing that I like so much, is the fact that you feel the people, the children in our communities. So I thank you first, and I thank everybody else who's worked very hard, not just on this, but just being a part of the school district. So thank you very much. Have a good night's sleep.
Thank you, Ms. Ralston. Thank you very much for the kind words. Ms. Wall?
I want to thank everybody who worked really, has been working really hard since the closure of schools back in March. I can't believe it's July. I know there's a perception that PWCS is late to the game and doesn't have a plan. That's kind of a narrative out there, but I think that's completely false. I know that it's otherwise, that, you know, and I think I speak for all of us when I say thank you for working very hard. I know man hours, women hours, it's got to be in thousands for everybody's effort. I want to say that whatever we decide, I do hope that as a district, as parents, as teachers and students, that we all do our part to make it work. I think that's really important. Obviously, with the plans that have been presented tonight, there's a very large percentage of people I've been hearing from families who are going to be really unhappy with even 50%. Because they understand that schools are essential. What our teachers do is essential. They are essential workers for our kids. They are next to their parents, probably the most important people in their lives. So clearly, we're going to make some people unhappy. I understand that. In a perfect world, I would say, let's all just go back to school and, you know, and see what happens. Because for children, clearly, to be back in school is the gold standard. It's what they need. And then my hope is that, as a society, we can really work together, and as school division as well, to get a, and so that we can get past phase three into phase four. And I'm excited to look at what phase four would be, because I know, I am speaking for many, many people. I want a return to normal, just like everybody else does. So for those parents who are listening, I don't know if anybody's still up. Please know that our goal is to get kids back in school and get school functioning as normal and beat the virus as a human kind. Life is full of risk. I know that. We've spent a lot of time talking tonight about mitigation of risk. We cannot eliminate the risk. It's impossible to eliminate a risk. I take a risk every time I wake up. I take a risk every time I drive down the street or I fly. There's risk in every aspects of our lives. And there's risk in going to school in the middle of a pandemic. There's risk in so many different ways. But we definitely have heard tonight, and I have confidence in the school division's plans and all of the mitigation efforts that have been proposed. I think that's tremendous. I think that those are really important. And they will hopefully help our teachers and our students be safe. So I just want to say, lastly, I'm really excited about what, I mean, in every crisis, there's always a silver lining. I think we have a couple of silver linings. One is our opportunity to explore 21st century educational technologies. I think that's going to be transformative for our school division, just kind of taking the long view and trying to be positive. I think, I think we're going to see some good things come out of this, especially if we work all together and we continue in this manner that we have adopted so far of trying to be collaborative, but also trying to accommodate people with real concerns, but also trying to push forward and still deliver a very high-quality learning product for learning for our students. Because at the end of the day, that's what it's all about, right? It's, we're trying to help students learn so that they can grow and develop and become the people that we need them to be, our future, future leaders of our country and everything else. So I just, I look forward to working with everybody. I hope we can do our very best and get, get kids back in school once we beat the virus.
Thank you, Ms. Wall. Mr. Wilk?
Thank you, Dr. Latif. Thank you, Dr. Waltz, your entire team. We have 47-plus people on here still, including principals, Dr. Jackson, my own district, and Mr. Brewer, and the entire team, and all the principals who put all the time into this process. I've had the pleasure of talking with principals, not only in my district, but other districts, about this whole process that went into this. I do want to quickly address, it may not be germane, but I want to say regarding last night, I was completely disheartened by the mischaracterization of what people were saying about our teachers and our workforce and our school division. I will stand by our teachers any day. They are extremely hard working, dedicated, steadfast, the commitment of working for their students in this county. So for every one example that was negative, and I'm not going to say there maybe wasn't a couple out there, but I can tell you another 50-plus teachers who did their jobs each and every day in this division, while balancing the roles of being at-home daycare essentially providers, parents, taking care of their families, you know, this is, it was truly disheartening. And a lot of comments have been shared, and a teacher named Lindsay Noel had a great post that was shared all over Facebook about the dedication that went into this. No one predicted this. No one knew that this was coming. This was something placed on every person in this country, no different than our teachers. They had to adapt and do this. And I don't fault them and blame them for the lack of clarity that came from our leadership, from the state government to the federal government down, all the way through this, you know, and not our own local government. I'm talking when it came to guidance from the state. You couldn't do new instruction past the third quarter in Essential. You could not take new grades. But our teachers still came and showed up, put up new material. It's not their fault that kids weren't logging in. That three kids out of 100 and something kids actually showed up and did their work. Our teachers were doing their jobs. And again, I stand by them 100% in the dedication that they put into this. And I saw it myself at home. And that's why this is deeply personal to me, as is everyone on this board. I taught. I'm not a teacher anymore. I've been out of the classroom for eight years. My wife is still in the classroom, and I have two sons in the school division that will be going to school in the fall. So the plan and what I support and what I vote for, and leaning towards this 50% process is going to put my wife back in the classroom. I'm going to put my special needs son back into the classroom four days a week. And then I'm going to enroll and put my kindergartner back in the school. I think we need to move forward. We need to have some sense of normalcy. I think it was Warren G. Harding who said that back in like 1920, his campaign pledge. I don't know what normalcy means, but I think as a division, we need to move forward and do the best we can to adapt to what we're facing in this country, while providing our teachers and our students with safety and security and supporting them all the way around. So that's my piece tonight. I thank everyone for joining. I know it's late, and we are 100% dedicated to trying to do this as a board, to make this right for our teachers, and Dr. Waltz and his team, as evidenced by tonight's dedication, and our principals, who are probably all watching all over this county. 100%. Thank you all. Thank you all for the dedication, and we will do the best that we can. And Jen, I'm emphasizing tonight that we can't go past 50%. It's a state policy. I'm getting hit in emails right now. We're not Florida, we're not Georgia, thankfully, in my opinion, but we are doing the best that we can to move forward and get our kids in school and phase that process in. That does not mean we don't have to reevaluate. I don't think anything is set in stone for the year. As we continue to progress, we look at this, see where we're at, and see what we can do to phase this in to get our kids back in school. So thank you all. Appreciate it.
Ms., I'll do Ms. Argarpur and then Ms. Williams. Is that okay? Ms. Argarpur?
All right. Thank you, Dr. Latif. And Dr. Waltz, you and your staff have been working, I know, nonstop. You've been putting in eight-day weeks, 32-hour days. I know. I send emails at 1:00 in the morning, and I get a response at 1:02. So I am so grateful for the amount of work. You know, schools are communities. And Mr. Wilk just talked about this being personal. It's personal to me, too. I am a teacher. And I didn't get to see some of my students after March 12th. Some of them, I teach 400 kids a week, and I didn't see about 100 of them at all at that point. So it was a huge loss for me. I know our teachers worked really hard. I watched my colleagues turn their worlds upside down to create the best lessons. And like Mr. Wilk said, we weren't required to do new material. And so we taught who showed up, and we did it the best we could. And we often spent way more time on lessons than we would if we could just walk into our classrooms. And I know that the day that we can just walk in our classrooms and not worry about COVID and face masks and sanitation and all of that will be a beautiful day. But until that day, we're going to build community a little bit differently. I want everybody, parents, students, caregivers, teachers, anything to do with our children, to just remember that we're all human. The first thing we're going to do is we're going to take care of each other. I know our plan isn't necessarily going to be perfect for everybody's needs. We're doing our best. And at the end of the day, that's, that's all we can expect of each other. I know, it's an unprecedented time. We, you guys probably have a bingo board where you're like, they said it again, woo! But it's true. This is not anything anyone had ever expected. And so a little grace to each other as the division staff works on the plans. As we continue going through the rest of the summer toward the beginning of our school year, whatever it'll look like, let's just take care of each other. Someone said last night that public schools are essential, are an essential part of our society. I wrote it down, because I thought it was a, it's true. This crisis has now shown how important schools are, because we have people who are desperate to get their kids back in school. It's their daycare. And I'm not saying that lightly or flippantly. It's a reality. And it's shown how much public schools are burdened by all the things that go on in society. We are healthcare, we are mental health, we are education, we are community, we're everything. And I can't wait till we can get back to normal, but with this new normal, we're just going to extend grace to each other and take care of each other. Everyone, have a good night. It's been a long day. Thank you.
Vice Chair, Williams?
Thank you. I just want to echo my fellow board members' comments. I don't have the vocabulary or the depth in language to express how thankful I am to our staff, to the community for reaching out, to my fellow board members. I've never served on a board where everyone is equally concerned, equally thoughtful, coming at this from different perspectives, but collaboratively working together for the greater good of everybody involved. And I am so impressed. the greater good of everybody involved, and I am so impressed. I'm so impressed with our school division staff. Again, it bears worth repeating. We don't have the level of staffing as our counterparts and our neighbors, and we consistently churn out comparable results, if not better, every single time. And, you know, I just can't repeat that enough. One of the things that I've heard consistently throughout this entire process is how essential staff is, how essential our teachers are, how essential our cafeteria workers are, how essential school is. So to my other elected officials from the federal level on down, I hope you classify schools as essential, because they are not. And when you talk about nation's security and things like that, schools are nowhere in there. This nation spent way more time talking about whether or not we can open a bar than we did a school. We don't fund our schools enough. We don't fund our teachers enough, and this pandemic has highlighted that. So if anybody ever runs for office again, you write on your ticket, promise of education. I hope as a as a society, we hold those people accountable. I am tired of it. We should not have to beg, borrow, and plead for the basic needs for our school division staff, for our teachers, for people to do what they need to do, because clearly, if schools aren't open, we don't run. And and I mean that from the bottom of my heart. It is ridiculous. And for the rest of my elected official school board, we're important, too. We don't get called on until the last minute, and I'm not saying that that every single elected official treats us like that, but on whole, we're often left out of conversations. And we and the administration make the decisions for for the future, essentially. We are the guiding force for the nation's treated that way, from the board member all the way down to the cafeteria staff worker and the janitor. This pandemic has really highlighted that. We don't run unless we have a place for our children, and we don't run in the future unless we educate our children properly. And I just can't say that enough. We don't get enough credit for what we do, and I say we, I mean, everybody involved, not just board members, because we're the decision-makers, but it's the day-to-day boots-on-the-ground people who make the difference that don't get the credit and the kudos and the pay that they deserve and the support. And I know that's going to upset a lot of people, but I don't care, because this pandemic has really, really highlighted that. We should be at every table for discussions, and we should be funded the way that we need to be funded to ensure our nation's future is capable of doing what it needs to do. And the tomorrows, no kids should be hungry. Our teachers shouldn't have to be worried about whether or not they can teach or feed their kids or have have the ability to work versus come. It's just, that's just insane that we have to have this conversation. So I just have to say that because we don't say it enough. And then, that's my main point, but I just want to thank everybody again. And then for Dr. Waltz and whoever else is listening, if we could get further updates on what our specialty programs look based upon that 50, our governor's school, our non-traditional schools, independents, because we don't talk enough about those programs. But I know all those staff and students are at home like, oh, my God, no one said anything about us. What do we do? We don't look like a traditional model. How does this affect us? What do those plans look like? What does this mean to us? We often leave those schools out of the conversation, and I don't want to leave them out. I want them to know that we care and we're thinking about them. There's just so much to talk about that sometimes we just don't get to everybody. But y'all are a valued member of this community, and and you deserve just as much much conversation about your programming and how this is going to affect you as our traditional models. Could just get an update on when we would expect to know how our staffing would look based upon what the consensus is, because I think that's really important when we go to make that decision. And I and I just, again, want to thank everybody. I appreciate everybody's time, and again, I want to advocate it for, I know we have another school board meeting on July 15th, but I think it's really important that we continue to meet, we continue to answer our public's questions. I can't justify sleeping at night, and if we spend less time talking about this with our public than we do a budget, and and this affects all of us. Prince William County Schools is the largest employer in this county, and we provide the most services. We touch everything. And and our constituent base needs to to feel that we've we've spent a lot of time on this, and they need to know that the division has spent a lot of time on this, and the way to do that is to have these conversations. Because as board members, we know the division works really hard and our staff work really hard, but the general public may not. So I just want to advocate for, again, an additional meeting time. So thank you, everybody. I appreciate your time, and I know some of us are not late-night hours like me, so I'm so sorry we kept you late, but I thank you so much.
Dr. Waltz, any final sort of remarks?
Thank you, Chairman Latif and members of the board. I just want to say I really, really sincerely appreciate you coming together to show us where the consensus is. That will really help us in our future planning starting tomorrow. That's a great accomplishment for the board. So thank you to the officers and the board at large for all your work and consideration on this and for actually coming to a consensus. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Waltz. I just wrap up by saying thank you to the board members. There's a lot of and forth that goes on on a daily basis. I want to specifically, because I don't do this enough, thank Vice Chair, Ms. Lori Williams. 16 to 20 hours a week, I'm in the operating room, and I can't take a phone call or look at an email. And and it's as if she's she's the chair during that time, and in my eyes, she's been fantastic, and she's been able to help us, I think, work together, and I think much of the collaboration that that I think I'm proud of on this board has a lot to do with the work Ms. Williams and all of you do together, and I can't thank you guys enough. So have a wonderful evening, everyone, and continue to, you know, send your questions as Dr. Waltz pointed out, continue to answer the public's emails as we can, and and we'll go from there. Thank you all. The meeting is adjourned.